Hey Jonathan, you ended up muted.
Yeah, that couldn't really hear.
Okay, I apologize. Where did I cut off? Thanks, Sarah.
You're fine. It was reading my email.
Okay, so simply send an email to S D O N O V A N at A N D E R S O N T O W N S H I P dot O R G to send Ms. Donovan your sign-in sheet electronically. Before the meeting begins, I would like to identify the appointed zoning commissioners that are participating in this meeting. Myself, John Gothard, chairperson, Jay Lewis, vice chairperson, Anne McBride, Brian Eliff, and Ben Henson. Other personnel are joining in the meeting by telephone and electronically include Mr. Paul Drury, director of planning and zoning, and Ms. Sarah Donovan, planning one with the Anderson Township. Each of us will do our best to remember to state our name before beginning to speak so that those joining us by phone can follow along. We thank you for joining us and appreciate your patience and understanding during these unprecedented times. And with that, like to start the meeting with... Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Gothard, we have no changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. With that, the second thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the October 26, 2020 Anderson Township zoning commission. Does anyone have any comments or changes to the minutes of the October 26 meeting?
One second. I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Could you call roll, Ms. Donovan?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. With that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the October 26 meeting. If there's any changes amongst the commission, please state those. Not hearing any changes. Could I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the October 26, 2020 Anderson Township zoning commission?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Donovan, could you please call roll?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
I'm going to abstain from the meeting, so I'll abstain from the roll.
Perfect. Thank you. And Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Thank you. First case on the agenda is a public hearing for a substantial modification, the case 2-2018 Anderson. The property is Skytop located at 5218 Beachmont Avenue, Book 500, page 430, parcel 207. The application is filed by Mr. Mark Rosenberger of Bear Becker on behalf of Metropolitan Holdings Limited, on behalf of Woodstone 4 Holding Skytop LLC, property owner. It's Zoned EE Planned Retail District. The applicant is proposing the construction of an apartment community for 361 units. Mr. Drury will be presenting today for staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gothard. I do want to acknowledge that Kyle Gibbs, our planning co-op, is also on the call, who's helped prepare the staff report. So once questions... Once we get to the question part of the presentation, he may be able to answer some questions as well. For the audience, we do have quite a few attendees tonight to give you, just in brief, to follow up on Mr. Gothard's comments. Staff will present the case. There will be a PowerPoint presentation along with the staff report. Once that is concluded, the zoning commission may have questions for staff. Then we will ask the applicant to make a presentation. Once the applicant is... Presentation and the commission has had a chance to have questions with the applicant, we will open it up for public comment, taking those in favor of the application first and those opposed second. We don't necessarily have a way to take reservations on when to speak. So we'll just take comment as they come after the applicant's presentation. So with that, again, the applicant for case 2, 2018 Anderson Skytop. This is a substantial modification for property located at 5218 Beachmont Avenue. The current zoning is EE, which is planned retail business. And the request is a substantial modification from the zone change that was approved in 2018. Next slide, please. To elaborate on what Mr. Gothard said, the proposal is to demolish the existing shopping center and to construct a one-building, a four-story structure with components that are five stories, approximately 363 square feet with 361 residential units. There's a mixture of one-bedroom apartments, two-bedroom apartments, and then three-bedroom apartments or two apartments with a den, however you wish to classify them at. The density is proposed at 29 units per acre. As stated, the majority of the structure is four stories, but there are select units that have a mezzanine, which is a fifth floor above the fourth floor, to the maximum height of 67 feet. The structure will include two courtyards, interior courtyards and building amenities, as well as select garages for some covered parking spaces. The previous approval was for nine three-story residential buildings with a height of 37 feet and 246 units. So therefore, that is why the zoning commission is reviewing this again as a substantial modification to what was approved due to height and density. Parking that is included is 627 spaces. They are compliant with the minimum parking standards for development of this size. As before, with the previous development approval, two full access drives will remain, as well as existing stormwater detention will remain as well. Next slide, please. And we do have a lot of slides to cover in between both cases. So if you need more explanation on some of these zoning commission, please stop me. I don't want to go too fast, but at the same time, we do have several slides to go through. The original approval in 2018 was for, again, nine... Three-story buildings, as well as three commercial outlots, two existing buildings, and one of the... A new commercial structure at 10,640 square feet. In the regional planning commission staff report, it was noted that this is being reduced in size. But the applicant wanted for us to make it clear that they were not proposing any changes to the commercial buildings. This was for their portion of the property, only the residential component. Next slide, please. The site history. The shopping center was built in 1999, and this was for... We had issued two separate zoning searches. It was one for the actual shopping center and then one for the grocery store, and then the two standalone commercial buildings. There was a variance in 1999 that was also approved for the free standing sign. And that's the existing sign that's there now. Next slide, please. As far as zoning history, again, the trustees approved a zone change in 2018. There was a final development plan approval in 2019. And then, most recently, for Big Ash Brewery, there was a major modification for deck expansion. And that was just in October. This is the site in question outlined in red. This is the residential component of the site. The three outlines are in front of that. And in the staff report, we separated the two uses. 12 acres for the multifamily parcel. And to include the commercial parcels, the site in total is just shy of 18 acres. Next slide, please. The outlined in red, again, is the site in question, which is Zoned EE Planned Retail. To the north is single-family zoning, same as to the east. To the south, there's retail zoning. And then the green area on the map is H Riverfront zoning. This is the aerial site, our aerial photo. Again, to the north, this is states of Signal Hill subdivision. To the south is the UDF. To the west is a commercial retail. And then to the east is vacant, as well as single-family homes. Next slide, please. This is the topography map. As you can tell, the site in question is relatively flat. And then there's an increase of topography to the north, and then Clough Creek to the east and to the south of the site. This is the future land use map designated from the 2016 comprehensive plan. The entire site is identified as mixed use. Next slide, please. These are the site photos. This is from Beachmont, looking back up at the existing shopping center of the former Rempey. Directly in your front is the detention basin, or, well, I'm sorry, this is... And the detention basin is to the left of the photo. Next slide. This is just more photos of the shopping center. To the west, northwest, is a home in the Estates of Signal Hill subdivision. And that property, too, which will come back to property line to property line, that is the closest residence to property line. But then I'll show you the other homes that are closest to the actual building. Next slide. This is the rear of the shopping center, looking to the east, back toward Clough Creek. This is looking in the opposite direction to the west, northwest. Again, the shopping center. There are many photos. We tried to get a photo of every angle to give you a good sense of the site and the surrounding conditions. Next slide. This is looking toward the UDF across Beachmont Avenue, as well as the detention basin. Next slide, please. Well, there's the detention basin. That was the creek that we were looking at. This is Big Ash Brewery. Next slide. The UDF again, across the street. I'm looking back toward Clough Creek again, to the east of the property. Clough Creek. And in the foreground, those are apartments that are in the city of Cincinnati, as you go up the hill on Beachmont Avenue. Again, just to the rear, trying to take photos to give you a sense of the elevation change from the site to the Estates of Signal Hill. There is a retaining wall, a small retaining wall toward the back of the shopping center. Next slide, please. Some of the... These are the closest homes that will be to the actual, what's proposed, the apartment building. And then, again, these are in the Estates of Signal Hill. Just another vantage point to give you an idea of the elevation change. Next slide. Next slide. We may come back to some of these for reference. This is taken actually from the Estates of Signal Hill, from the road coming in off of 32. The two lower homes are the homes that would probably have the closest view of the proposed apartment building. As you can see, the grade changes to these homes from the main road in Signal Hill. That's the private drive, so we did not go down that to take important... This is the signalized intersection at Beachmont with the existing sign. The applicant, which this is not clear in our staff report, and we apologize, the applicant is requesting to keep that sign. So before, during the final development plan, a proposal was to have a new sign that's compliant with township regulations. The applicant now is modifying that request and requesting a variance to keep this sign and update the current sign. This is the other exit or entrance/exit access point. This is the shared access point to the shopping center closer to Beachmont Avenue. So this is the site plan, and it is a little small online. But as you can see, we went from nine three-story buildings to one four-to-five-story building. The building is situated closer to the eastern side of the property. There are some single-level or little-story garages on the perimeter of the east and the northeast property line for covered parking. There is an amenity area inside the courtyards and the interior courtyards. The majority of the parking field is on the eastern, or, I'm sorry, on the western side of the site. The two entrances/exits are proposed to be remain. There is also a proposed trailhead for the Little Miami Trail connector that is proposed from Alston to Little Miami Trail. That is located on the main drive coming in from the signalized intersection there by the Clough Creek. Next slide, please. This is the color rendering, so you can see a little bit better the covered garage spaces. Again, the main entrance is the signalized entrance, and that is the main entrance into the building itself. The other parking field is off to the west. There is a separate drive between the commercial properties and the residential properties. That was what was proposed in 2018, and that is still... Proposed to remain. There are several variances for zoning compliance, and we'll get into those a little bit later in the PowerPoint presentation under zoning compliance. And we can come back to the site plan if we need to. Next slide, please. This is the landscape plan. I'm not going to spend too much time on these because it's so hard to see on the computer. And you have your hard packets in the, or hard copy packets. This is just a sample floor plan of one of the levels. These are the elevation drawings that will show the height. Again, two different heights to focus on, but there is a variance request. There's the four-story level, and then you have these mezzanines that are proposed to... These would be the units that would have the two bedrooms plus a den. And also adds architectural features to the building. Those are the areas that need a variance for 67 feet in height. Next slide, please. This was a site section to give you an idea of the proposed height of the building as compared to the change for the homes on top of Signal Hill. What we're... What the image is... This is one of the variance requests, and we can come back to that if we need to. Slide, please. This is just a site rendering of the building. The idea was to have an architecture that resembled art deco architecture, to blend with some of the features of art deco architecture in Cincinnati, including Lincoln Airport. So the agency reports, a couple I want to touch on is the Hamilton County engineer requires right-of-way dedication 60 feet from the center line. And it's unclear if this has been done yet. It is identified in cages, but it's unclear if this has been dedicated. So that is a requirement. The other item that Ham... Or Township Fire and Rescue submitted a letter stating that they did have concerns with access to the interior courtyards. So that would need to be addressed later on when the building gets further in design. Those were the two key agencies. The others were standard review comments.
Paul, before we move on, we have received comments in the chat section. As a reminder, we can only accept public testimony that is spoken. So please do not use this chat feature. Please wait until it's time to hear public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ohio Department of Transportation. So this is State Route 125, and a permit will be required by ODOT. The applicant has been working with ODOT to determine what will need to be included in a traffic impact study. A traffic impact study will be required. They are working with ODOT to finalize what will need to be included in that study. It's anticipated, though, that the two access points will remain. The unsignalized access point, there has been discussion that this may need to be modified as it's currently wider than what is a typical access point. It has an entrance separated from the exit by a median. And there is some discussion that that may need to be modified, not eliminated, but size-wise modified to better direct traffic. Next page. Our next slide, please. So we'll go first through zoning compliance, and we may need to go back to some of the slides to demonstrate these. There is a variance requested for height. The maximum height is 35 feet in the EE zoning district unless the building is set back the same distance as its height. The proposed residential building is requesting a 67-foot height variance. The rear yard setback is approximately 44 feet. The other item is that in the EE zoning district, it states that the building should not occupy more than 10% of the site, and they are occupying 16.7 of the total area of the track. And we can go back to the other diagram if we need to, if you have more questions. Next slide, please. Yes, that's fine. The parking area. The applicant is requesting two variances for the parking area. One is for the parking stalls. Township standard is nine by 19, and the applicant is requesting a nine by 18. The applicant is also requesting a variance for the drive-out width. I think I might have skipped ahead here. Sarah, if we can go forward, I think I skipped... Here we are. So the applicant is requesting a variance for a drive-out of 20 feet versus 24 feet. Staff has a concern with this and feels that a 20-foot drive-out with an 18-foot-long parking stall would be too small. If we'll go back to the other ones, Sarah, that we skipped. The applicant's requesting a variance for the accessory buildings. These are the covered garages. Accessory buildings are required to be in the rear yard, and some of these are proposed in the side yard. There was one about buffers, Sarah, that we skipped over. So this is a requirement that no parking area should be located within 20 feet of any sideline of a residential area. Again, the residential area that this would be a buffer is the rear of these properties where there is an extreme grade change. Now we can move forward. Bicycle parking. The amount of parking spaces for bicycles was not included. So we're recommending that that be included with the new development plan. Next slide. Parking perimeter landscaping. Again, there are certain areas that perimeter landscaping is not included, and that's primarily along the northern section as well as the eastern side. But on the eastern side, you do have Clough Creek, and there's a change in grade down to the creek. Now, along the northern property line, there's a change in grade. So the applicant's requesting a perimeter landscaping variance. Next slide, please. There is a request for a reduction of interior landscaping, interior parking lot landscaping. Our requirement is 10%. They're requesting 9%. Next slide, please. This, again, was a requesting a variance to keep the existing sign. So the rendering that we have here on the slide is what was approved in the final development plan, phase one. And then the existing sign is on the slide as well. Next slide, please. The applicable plans, I'm not going to touch too much on this, but the site is identified as mixed use. And staff feels that this is consistent with the future land use plan. It does provide a residential component for this site. And this was discussed in 2018 when the zone change was first approved. We feel that although it's not mixed use in one building, it is mixed use on the site itself. You have the commercial of Beachmont, and you have a residential component. So staff feels that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There will fair playing consistency. The applicant will be required to dedicate 60 feet of right-of-way. The other plans that we looked at are the trails and walkways plan. There are sidewalks on Beachmont Avenue, not along this particular property, but on the Mount Washington Hill. There's also a proposal to tie the Little Miami Trail into this site on the side of Beachmont Avenue by UDF. When that does happen, the... And when the bridge is constructed across the Little Miami River next year to complete the Little Miami Trail in this vicinity, the parking area for the trail by Speedway off of 32 is proposed to be removed. So in our discussions with the applicant, we thought this site would be appropriate for such a use due to the close proximity to the trail, the convenience of the surrounding neighbors, that it may be a good location to move that over to this particular site. So there are trails within, or sidewalks within the development proposed, and sidewalks on Beachmont Avenue, and there will be a, at the signalized intersection to cross Beach. Trail. So we feel like it is consistent with the trails and walkway plans. We feel it's also consistent with the design guidelines. Next slide, please. We did receive two letters from township committees. One was from the Township Tree Committee, recommending that if a variance was granted for interior landscaping, that those trees be planted elsewhere on site to make up for the loss of trees on the interior of the parking areas. From our Economic Development Committee, they were supportive of the zone change and felt that it was consistent with the comprehensive plans. Also felt that the introduction of multifamily would help support surrounding retail businesses, not only in Anderson Township, but also Mount Washington. So next slide, please. So staff is recommending approval of the major modification, or, I'm sorry, substantial modification. And we can go through the variances real quick. Well, the conditions first. If the zoning commission approves this, you can see here landscaping plan requirements that all Ohio Department of Transportation be met. Site plan identifying crosswalks. There is a portion of the parking lot that has a dead end in the last parking area. The exterior of the proposed structure, the match the character, the accessory uses match the character of the building itself. And then for any changes, it would be required to go, or subject to the general development plan provisions. So real quick on the variances, staff does recommend approval of the building height 67 feet or 35 feet is required for the reasons of the extreme change in elevation. And if we... I don't know if you want to go back to that illustration or... Because I think the applicant also has additional information here. But from the base of the elevation of where the building would be constructed to the base of the homes up on Signal Hill, when you take that elevation change into consideration, the top, the highest point of these buildings is 67 feet. There's still a 30-to-40-foot elevation change from the top of the building to those homes. So therefore, staff was supportive of this variance, even though it is in close proximity to single-family homes. There's still 30-to-40-foot elevation change between the top of this building to the bottom of those homes. So the central character will not be altered. There are other apartment buildings, as you saw in the one photo in the vicinity, as you've headed east into Mount Washington. And we felt that the spirit and intent of the requirement would be met because of the elevation change, not only the impacts of Signal Hill, but also from Beachmont Avenue, the buildings are set back behind the creek, behind the buildings, as well as... behind the creek, behind buildings as well as east, they are separated by the creek as well as vegetation. Next slide, please. Staff was recommending approval from the buffering of the parking area to the rear. Again, because of the change in elevation and the characteristics in that particular area of the property. Next slide. Recommending approval of the variances for the accessory structures in the side yard. Next slide. Some suggested conditions for this is that those do not exceed sixteen fifteen feet in height and that the materials match the architecture of the building. Staff was okay with the parking stalls to be nine by eighteen. We're recommending approval of that. However, staff was not supportive of the drive aisles being twenty feet versus twenty four feet. Again, I felt that it was just too tight and combination, you're losing six feet total, four feet for the drive aisle and two feet for each of the parking stalls. So staff felt that a combination of those two was too tight. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And then we do not recommend approve or recommend denial of the variance for the bicycle parking spaces because of this developments proximity to the bike trail. Though that those should be included with their development. Next slide, please. We do recommend approval of the variance for landscape buffer along the adjacent residential lot lines, again, because of the conditions, the site change in topography, the creek, et cetera. And again, I'm not going into too much detail in these because it is such a long presentation and I know I want to answer the questions that are important to you. And we can go into more detail if you need to. Next slide, please. The interior landscaping, I think, will depend on the outcome of variances for the stalls and the drive aisles. But if the nine percent, if if a variance is granted for this, staff would just recommend that this landscaping be planted elsewhere on site. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, so if Sarah, if you will go back to maybe the color rendering of the site plan. And I would be happy to answer questions from the zoning commission or go into more detail on some of these items that you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Mr. Henson, any questions of staff?
No, I don't have any questions for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eleph, any questions of staff?
I have a couple that maybe Paul or Sarah could answer. The first one is, Paul, can you, I don't know if your pointer works on this or not, but if not, you can just explain. I I heard you say, and I basically understand that how the residents this apartment complex would get to the Little Miami Bike Trail would be to cross Beachmont Avenue and then go west. So after you get past, say, UDF approximately, can you explain to me how that tie in is going to work? I guess I was thinking it would come out the other way and connect in by Speedway somewhere, but I remember you went over this with last time this was up. But can you explain that again? Because I'm just very curious about that. You did still, Paul.
Thank you. Sorry about that. If you maybe go to this map. So the the existing Little Miami Trail, it currently dead ends into the levee. The connection will be made. Yeah, if we'll go back to the aerial, it's not quite there. We didn't zoom out far enough, but so you will, the trail extension will be on the south side of Beachmont Avenue, on the UDF side of Beachmont Avenue. It'll cross. The final plan hasn't been designed yet, but it'll either go outside of that off ramp or it'll cross the off ramp. The existing Little Miami Trail will come under the bridge and then ramp up to the bridge. And that's where the connection will be. So it'll be on the south side of third of one twenty five and where one twenty five and thirty two come together.
I still the addition to the bridge to get over to Lunk is going to be on the south side of the bridge.
I believe so, I believe so, yes.
Okay. Okay. You touched on this a little bit in your presentation, but I'll ask again about the right of way dedication that is it the county or is it ODOT asking for? One of them is, but where is that coming from? Because isn't that doesn't that just drop off into the detention area? Or is there more room to dedicate?
Well, I mean, it will go into the creek area. It does not reach as far back to the detention area. And on cages, it is shown. The right of way parcel is shown, but it's still showing that it's linked to the commercial outlots. So that's something that the engineer may be able to answer for you. We
Would it be the outlot owners in that would have to dedicate it, I guess?
It was a requirement of the original zone change, so we're still treating this as part of that overall development.
I understand. That's all my questions, Mr. Gothard. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eleph. Mr. Lewis, any questions of staff?
Sorry, I was looking for the unmute. Hey, Paul. In the proposal, they mentioned six hundred and twenty seven parking spaces where five hundred ninety three are required, correct?
That is correct. Three is our optimum number and as of right, they are permitted to increase that ten percent or decrease ten percent.
Okay, so if we deny the drive length or drive width aisles, have the numbers been rerun of how many spaces that will take out?
That hasn't been provided to us yet, how redesign of the parking lot would impact their total numbers.
Okay. And on the secondary entrance exit, is that a right in, right out only today? Not signalized, signalized entrance?
It is a full access and it's proposed to remain a full access. There's, it's just wider than what is the standard for today and it's separated by median, the in and the out is separated by, say, a little median with a light post, so.
So people headed toward Mount Washington, can they go left into there? If they're headed toward Mount Washington?
Yes.
Do we have any information on accident rates?
It's my understanding that is low, very low. But it's anticipated with increased traffic from the apartments compared to vacant shopping center that the the idea is not to reduce that access. I mean, it would still be a full access, it's just to reduce the width of it.
Okay. Have we seen any uptick with the the big ash going in there with, because they have probably, well, I don't know outside before COVID. How much traffic has increased because of that?
Haven't seen, are you referring to an increase in accidents?
Yeah, I think it's a dangerous proposition. To have that is, should this be approved with the additional traffic? I'm concerned about a non signalized, and I know it's a, it's an ODOT question being one twenty five, but.
It is, and that's what's being determined by ODOT now. The applicant is is working with ODOT to determine what type of traffic study they need to produce. So ODOT can determine what improvements need to be made at that that access point.
All right, and then going back to your presentation, we did not hear anything from the Hillside Trust, is that correct?
We did not.
Okay, no other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. McBride, any questions of staff?
Yeah, just a couple. Paul, I guess the the one question that I definitely have is if our code requires nine by nineteen parking spaces. And I understand the industry standard is nine by eighteen. Why are we granting a variance? Why are we not changing our resolution? I mean, what's what's the hardship here?
The hardship, the applicant is stating that the hardship is their preferred number of parking spaces is the six hundred. Let's see, let me get the exact number, the six hundred something number, that that is their preferred number of parking spaces. So with this being an apartment community. Staff felt that since this is a planned district, is there, if there's any give or take, that that would be an area that you know, could be more relaxed because if it's it's an apartment community, it's not a high turnover use like the commercial uses. So we felt that if if there's a give or take and that would allow them to achieve their optimum, their number, optimum number of spaces, that that would be an area that we could support versus a reduction in length and reduction in aisle width.
Yeah, the reduction in in the aisle width, I I think is ridiculous, but I I guess if we're going to be doing this, I think that maybe staff ought to look at modifying the code because I think you know, if you look at the standards, they're nine by eighteen as opposed to nine by nineteen. I just have a little bit of concern about saying, well, it's okay here, but it's, you know, I mean, it is a variance from the code and I understand that they like it, but lots of people would like lots of things. So do you have any concerns about the meeting the fire department comments? They're going to have to work those out with the fire department.
Right, I think once the building gets further along in design, it will have to meet certain standards to be approved by the fire department and by the Hamilton County Building Department. So I mean, ultimately, it'll be up to to them to meet those requirements. It wouldn't be passed without them meeting that requirement. So I think it was just an opportunity for the fire department to raise that red flag to the applicant to make them aware. You know, once this, if it gets further down the road, that that will have to be addressed with them.
Okay, and then that western access that we've been talking about, is that even on their property where it hits?
The majority of it is not, it's on the adjacent commercial area. And one of the comments from ODOT is that an easement needs to be in place. And I think the applicant can probably explain a little bit about that as well. It has been shared access for many years, but they are working to formalize an easement for that.
Because I mean, I'd be surprised with the ODOT manual, since it's a change in use going from retail to multifamily, if they don't make that a right in, right out.
That's in discussion, not necessarily limiting it to a right in, right out, but just the access point in general is in discussion.
Okay. I think that's everything that I had for you. I got lots for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Those are my questions to the applicant, so thank you, staff.
Okay, thank you.
For the report and the presentation, greatly appreciated. Now, if someone with the applicant would like to present their case, please state your name, address, and then the affiliation to the case.
Hello, Commission, my name is Andrew Wapner. I'm with Metropolitan Holdings, fourteen thirty three Grandview Avenue, Columbus, Ohio. And Paul, am I able to? I should be able to share my screen.
Yes, I believe so.
Also, Matt Pecasey with Metropolitan Holdings as well.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, Matt, I'll go through the presentation and then Matt and I will both tag team answering questions from from staff and from the community when we get to that portion. Thank you, Paul, for a great overview of the project. I'll try to move through this quickly, since I know a lot of people have have questions. This is the site again, Paul did a great job of explaining where where everything on the site is. This is a, one of the things when we started this project was we looked at the comprehensive plan and we really liked the parts about connectivity and like that our project was well positioned both with connectivity to the roadways, walkability from our project to some of the adjacent retail as well as the bike and trail system. And so this is a drawing that was given to us, I believe by the township as a suggested alignment for the bike trail system. So you can see over here by the UDF where it's near our site and we would connect down to that from our proposed trail hub, which is along our main entrance drive. I've got that on the next slide.
Are we able to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is there a way to make your screen bigger or to fill the Mr. Wapner's screen?
It's filling my screen. Is it, I I don't know how to make it fill yours anymore than it is.
Joe, do you have a button on the right hand side by all the faces that says layout? Because next to layout, you can hit full screen. No. I don't know if that helped or not.
Sarah, is it filling your screen?
Yeah.
Andrew, it looks like you may have two screens operational and we're looking at the presenter view screen. Not the presentation screen.
I only have one. Only have one screen here. Add a second monitor, did I turn my other monitor off? Does that, did that help?
You need to go into presentation mode.
I can see it just fine for whatever reason.
Yeah, I mean, my, the presentation is full screen on my computer. Is it something I'm setting in WebEx that I need to go to?
I I think it's about as big as it's going to get, Andrew, so I would just continue.
Okay. I apologize. So this is the, this is the the bike trail system as we were, as we were given to it by, I believe it was the township or the county, I'm not.
Steve Severs, yeah, Steve Severs provided this to us and he's applied, he said, Paul, that you guys had applied for a grant to provide this connector.
So this, this is a drawing, this is rotated ninety degrees, so it fits on the page, but this is a drawing that shows that trail hub, so Beachmont is to the left on this drawing. We would connect with a multipurpose trail back to a an overlook area over the creek as a trailhead. These are some inspiration images that we've previously shared with with the township in some discussions on on that trailhead. This is just a site drawing that shows from our surveyor showing the topography that kind of wraps wraps the site and the extreme grade change that is around it. I'll go through our renderings real quick. As Paul mentioned, we were looking at Cincinnati for some inspiration on style and we noticed that there's, there's a precedent in Cincinnati for an art deco style and we really liked that and thought it would be appropriate to introduce elements of that to this building. there's um, there's a precedent in Cincinnati for an art deco style and we really liked that and thought it would be appropriate uh to introduce elements of that um to this building. Some black and white three D images. And then uh some examples of precedent around Cincinnati of other other art deco buildings. One of our goals with this project is to create a best in class apartment community and and really have um first class amenities that are high quality, well designed uh to cater to tenants. We don't believe that this is the type of product that currently exists in Anderson Township. And and we believe that this is a good location for it. It's close to downtown. Um, it's close to some retail. It's uh, close to the highway system and close to the bike trails. So there there's a lot of amenities in the community around this site and we think we can provide a lot of amenities onsite to make this a really great place to live. Um, these are just some images from similar types of projects on the types of spaces that we'll provide for our courtyards. And similarly, these are some um interior shots of similar projects with really nice lobbies, uh, club rooms, business center, fitness, game rooms, things like that, theater rooms. And I want to say that we we agree uh with most of what Paul said. We agree with um staff opinion on most of the variances. However, we e- except for the drive aisles, we still would like to request the drive aisles um reduction to twenty feet. Um, this is an enlargement of the western side of the parking lot. Matt and I were looking at this earlier today. Um, we noticed this median at the su- southern edge between us and the commercial property is twelve feet four inches. We, we originally wanted to keep this wide for landscaping so that trees uh and shrubs could all do well and thrive and we'd have this nice buffer. We thought about it some and came to the conclusion we could probably reduce that to ten foot four inches. We would take out two feet where the dashed dark green line is. We might lose a couple spots in this corner of the parking, but we could, we could increase this southern drive aisle to twenty-two feet because one of the staff's comments was getting rid of a dead end at this, at this left end of that southern drive aisle, and we do agree that that would be an improvement. Uh, we were originally a little bit worried about um controlling traffic at this end, but we think it can be manageable. And we believe that there's probably a decent amount of people who will drive along the building and turn left there and try to navigate around the lot. So we believe that 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 southern drive aisle would probably be appropriate to increase. We, this map shows the drive aisles around the site. We are not proposing to reduce all of them to twenty feet. Only some of the interior drive aisles that aren't being used by delivery trucks, garbage trucks, the fire department, et cetera, only a few interior lots that are only used by residents parking within those drive aisles. And we've looked at our demographics for this project and we believe that the majority of our demographics aren't going to be driving large pickup trucks. Um, the largest vehicle is probably a large SUV. And um, I've got a video that we took that shows that that can easily be accommodated. And for people who do have a larger truck, sixty-six percent of our parking spaces do meet the zoning requirement. Uh, five percent of our parking spaces would be along this twenty-two foot wide drive aisle and then only twenty-nine percent of the parking spaces would be on this reduced drive aisle. So this is, this is a project that was approved and built in in Columbus, Ohio, uh, among several others. This is just where we went to take the video. Uh, this drawing shows it's got the, got the approval stamp right down here. Uh, this is where the video was taken. The the parking is eighteen eighteen feet wide deep parking spaces and a twenty foot wide deep drive aisle. The red circle indicates kind of where where this was taken. Is uh, did this switch over to the video versus the PDF?
Yep.
So I'm gonna play this quick. It's about a forty second video. It shows uh, I'm driving a Toyota 4Runner, so a larger SUV and pulling in and out of the space. So this is a twenty foot drive aisle. And an eighteen foot deep parking stall. So there's space both, but space at the back of my car. Pulling back out. And our, our drone pilot overshoots a little bit, but uh she shows that I'm not I'm not uh into the other, she kind of overshot, but I'm not into the other parking spaces there. And in the interest of time, I'm not gonna show them, but we do have videos um in one take showing the measurement, that the measurements of this parking lot do meet the plan and I can show those if anyone, if anyone needs, but they were provided to s- to staff as well. And the other, the other variance um I'd like to discuss is the sign. Uh, we do know that um a proposal was shown for a sign previously that does meet the zoning. However, uh, when we look at that sign in um on Google Street View, down at the bottom shows the proposed sign and adjacent to it is the existing sign with a red line at the approximate height of the proposed altered sign. Above, on the images above are group, Google Street View showing with a red line where that line would be. And unfortunately, Google didn't let me be in the right hand uh lanes. But you can see if you were in those lanes, the vegetation i- in front of those signs would would hide them. And we want, we want the retail to thrive. We want our business to thrive. And we feel like the sign has been there for a while and we would like to improve it. We'd like to get rid of the green triangle at top, at the top and put a logo for the center. Clean up the sign, fix any, any lights that aren't working and and do improvements like that, but we'd like to keep the overall height. And uh, that's kind of all I have. I'd like to move on to to questions from staff.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. McBride, questions of the applicant?
Sorry, you can never find that unmute when you need it, you know, and it's always there when you don't need it. So at any rate, um, so um, yeah, I do have some, some questions. The images that you were just showing us of the really nice lobbies and the amenities and stuff, are those from Metropolitan Projects?
Uh, they are from projects done by the same interior designer that we're hiring for this project.
But they.
We haven't, uh, we, we didn't have any um a- any of our projects with uh images from that interior designer. We've not used them before. So we, we thought it was more appropriate to show work that they've done.
I guess I'd rather see work that you've done than they've done. Um, but that's just one commission's opinion. Um, so let's talk about the tenants. What, what's the age range that you're looking for?
Uh, our market demographics show age range probably from uh upper twenties, maybe twenty-eight to forty-five, forty-eight.
Okay. And what are you thinking about rent wise?
Um, Matt, do you, do you know those numbers off the top of your head?
We're, I mean, we're, we're a thousand to two thousand a month roughly.
Okay. Um, and then waste, how are you guys gonna handle that? I notice you've got a compactor in the northeast corner of the site. Do people put the garbage outside their doors and then you like valet collect, like so many developments or?
Yes, that's correct. We'll do valet trash and then we have a compactor and um often we have to have a private hauler because it needs to be picked up more than once a week.
Okay. Um, the trailhead that you've talked about, um, is that gonna be open to the public? And if so, is there gonna be parking provided for the, for the public to access the the bike trail from there?
Yes, it will be open to the public and uh you, you brought up a good point that I forgot to mention. Um, we, a- as staff mentioned, we do have more parking spaces than would be required by zoning. Um, two of the reasons that we need that are, one, we believe that with um this level of amenities and stuff, we, we believe a lot of our residents will want to have guests over to visit. Um, and two, because this, there's a public uh bike trail access, we believe that um there will need to be some parking spaces for people to use that. And so we believe that being uh, ha- having an increased parking count is appropriate for this project.
Um, are you proposing bike, bike storage or um bike workshop, those kind of things that people are doing now?
Um, we, we haven't, we haven't got that far into design um to know, but uh, staff did mention um there was a variance for um bike spaces. We're not actually, I think that that was just, that may have been a typo. I think on our submitted plan, we had under the required amount. We would provide whatever the required amount of bike um bike spaces is.
Yeah, no, I, I know you, you'll supply what's required. What I was looking for is a lot of these type of communities now are providing uh enclosed bike storage space, particularly when you're this close to a bike trail. Uh, and then they even go so far as they have rooms where you can work on your bike.
Are you asking about for our residents or for the public?
Yeah, the resident.
Our resident, we will have internal um storage uh for our residents. Um, we actually have been talking about amenities and hadn't thought about a bike workshop, but that's actually a fantastic idea that we will definitely consider.
I'll tell my other clients you like their idea.
I really like that idea.
Uh, with regards, there's a retaining wall now. We saw pictures of it. I think it's just a lawful steam wall on the north. And is the thought, are you gonna, is that stay or are you replacing that? And if so, what kind of wall are you gonna be replacing that with?
Uh, that, that's staying. We're not proposing any alterations to um, to the cliff face for back of letter, um, a better term. We are proposing a small wall at the um, at the bumper end of our cars that park back there. Um, something that's maybe eighteen inches or two feet high just to stop a- any small debris that falls down that hill from hitting people's cars. And I believe that's noted on the site plan. So that's what that retaining wall is. It's just a small wall to stop debris.
Is that also gonna be a lawful steam or how's, what material is that gonna be?
Uh, that'd probably be um concrete or block.
Okay. Um, and then uh, in your I T E memo, you were talking about, I, it was a little bit misleading to me, quite frankly, because you compared retail to multifamily and this site is not approved for retail anymore. It's multifamily. And it's significantly less density than you're proposing. So I thought that was a little bit misleading. Um, the other question, the question that I had on that though was you used an internal capture rate for multifamily, which I've never heard of before. I mean, I get the capture rate if you're a Kroger and you've got a fuel center, but can you explain to me the internal capture rate for the multifamily when you've, all you've got out here is a very limited amount and specific use retail?
Are you, what, what um application are you talking about? You said the I T E?
Yeah, you're on your uh trip generation info that you've got?
Oh, gotcha. Um, Mark, I believe our civil engineer is on who prepared, who prepared that document. Mark, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. I, I personally can't get into the great details of this. However, we are scoping this with ODOT and uh what we require for their T I S to uh, to uh revise those numbers accordingly. This is just using the I T E manual. I, I, which I can, I personally get into the, the great details of all of it. We, we just, uh, we just knew though that uh there will be a reduction from the current retail component, even though it's been changed to uh the new project that's proposed.
Well, Mark, I understand that there would be a a decrease if Remke was still there or Biggs and the uh wings and rings and the gym and all that kind of stuff, but from the number of units that are approved currently for this site to the what thirty-five, forty percent increase in the number of units that are being proposed, I don't think that's a decrease in the trips that are gonna come off this site. Um, but aside from that, I, I, my question was, I didn't understand what an internal capture rate was for multifamily.
We will have to get back to you on that. I, I answered.
Okay. Um, and then I guess Adam, back to you. So the, and I don't know this, I'm just asking this question because I had to come up on another project over in Northern Kentucky with C B G and and maybe that's a different requirement with the FAA, but um, have you guys looked into the Lunkin flight path? If you're proposing sixty-seven feet? Andrew?
Um, I, no, I don't think so, but we're, sixty-seven feet is well below the um, the adjacent hill and the, the trees. So I, I can't imagine that it would be a problem, but we will look into that.
Yeah, I, I would just do that, urge you to do that because again, I did a three story home, two suites and and it was an issue over, but again, that was C B G. So that's just a question for you. Um, so um, then on the signage, um, I, I understand why we had the hundred and thirty or whatever, a hundred and eighty-seven square feet of signage for a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail, but I don't know why we would need a hundred and eighty-seven square feet of signage for the outlots that are proposed.
Yeah, so let me go to, to that page. Um, so we don't know how many tenants will be in the, there's a proposed ten thousand square foot uh retail building. Um, that was going to be a Starbucks at one point. I believe that that project is still, still proposed and and approved. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure its current status. Um, but we want to make sure that there are enough spaces on the sign for at least um four to five tenants in that building plus uh Big Ash plus um the, the building that used to house the Starbucks um that, that does not currently. Uh, and then as well as our uh project, and we just feel that, that this sign is here. And uh, i- it's been grandfathered. It's been here for a number of years and we'd like to keep it. A, a big part of our motivation isn't just square footage, but i- it's height. You come down this hill and there's all this uh landscaping from the creek right in front of it. Um, the other thing I didn't point out is zoning code allows these signs to be at the edge of the right of way. Uh, if I zoom in down here, this is, this is our entrance. Uh, the red line represents the right of way. That existing sign is around twenty-two feet back from the right of way. So because of the existing vegetation and the setback of the sign, w- we believe that um grandfathering this sign with some cosmetic improvements would be warranted.
Um, and then a couple of other questions. Western access, so you guys are working with the folks that own that little strip somewhere there? Cause I guess you don't have an access either, cross access?
Uh, correct. We're, we're working with them. That access is mostly in front of, a majority of it is in front of their properties. It kind of straddles the, the property line. Uh, my understanding is that um, th- they need to be in agreement with that also. So that's gonna be an ongoing discussion between us, them and ODOT and and what really needs to be done there.
Okay. And just, just a couple more questions and then I'll let somebody else take a shot. Um, building materials, did I see a lot of ethos on the building?
Um, there is a lot of masonry. There's a lot of uh cement based siding and then there is uh, there is some ethos, yes. So the ethos is limited to um the, the taller portions of these towers. Everything on the first three stories of them, first three floors of them is masonry. The, all of the four story portions of the building are all uh masonry or cement based product.
Okay. Um, and then um, just last question, how are you gonna scrape the H V A C units on top of the building? Are you using cages or what?
Uh, well, we have a, we have a parapet that goes around, uh, that sticks up above the rooftop. And the H A C will also be set back from the, it won't be at the edges. And the H A C will also be set back from the, it won't be at the edges.
This is a little bit of a different circumstance because obviously we've got residences that are above you. So is there any thought given to what they're going to see from, from their backyards?
We'll certainly get into that at some point during, during design. We hadn't currently planned screening. We will try to organize everything neatly up there, but we can look in, we can look into doing some screening.
Okay. I think that's all that I've got for now, Mr. Gothard.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Lewis, any question for applicant?
Ms. McBride, I do have Jenny Angles on to answer your question on internal, internal traffic.
If, do you want to answer this?
Name and address?
I'd be interested to hear what she had to say, if it's all right with the rest of the commission.
I think it's fine, this, I'd like her to state her name and address, please, and affiliation to the case.
It looks like Jenny, she's on, but she does not have a speaker. So we could, we'd have to get back to you again.
Okay. All right, now, Mr. Lewis.
Commissioner McBride asked, got to answer some of my questions. I'm happy to hear about the, there wasn't a reduction in the bike spaces. And as far as the, the H backs and the screening on the top, I'm very interested in that. From an aesthetic viewpoint of what the other people are going to see, also anything on noise reduction, or possible noise reduction? So anything available today?
Yes, I can, I can talk to both of those. So like I said, on the bike reduction, we're not really looking to reduce the bike spaces. We'll provide the required amount, and we'll probably have some additional over by the, or by the trailhead. As far as noise, I actually looked into this. And let me pull up. So I looked at some specification sheets from similar projects that we just did. Units range and size depending on one bedroom or two bedroom. But the average, the average running noise is around 74 decibels. I found some online calculators that allow you to, to input a number of sources to basically multiply 74 decibels times 361 units. And how, sound doesn't really work additively. It's a logarithmic relationship that has more to do just with the most noisy unit that's there. So when you take 361 units times 74 decibels, you get 99.6 decibels if all units were running at the same time. And that's if you were standing at a distance of one foot. From the center of our building to the nearest neighbor is around 580 feet. And at that distance, the decibel level drops to 44.32. And then down at the bottom here is kind of a comparison. So 50 decibels is the average ambient noise level of a quiet suburb, of a refrigerator, of a rainfall, of the average home, and of a coffee pot. 40 decibels is a library and the lowest limit of urban sound possible, and then a light rain. So our, our A C units are no, no noisy than the ambient sound at that distance.
Okay.
That would be if all 361 units were running simultaneously.
Well, I have four kids, I could argue different numbers.
Yeah, I, I taught myself to be an acoustical engineer over the last week and found some online sources to help me out here.
Okay, thank you for that. Is the parking for the residents, is it dedicated outside of the garages? Or is it first come, first served?
We will have a combination of dedicated spaces and first come, first served. We'll do some, some spaces near, near the entrances that'll be dedicated. And then the balance will be first come, first served.
Okay. And I had, I had asked of staff about the 24-foot lane versus 20-foot. Have you rerun the numbers? Should we go with the zoning standard of 24-foot? What that does to the number of, of spaces?
Yeah, so if we go with the standard amount, we lose 26 spaces on the, on the left-hand side of the site. Let me look for my drawing here. On, on the western portion, we'd lose an entire row of 26 spaces. And we'd lose probably another four spaces in the eastern lot for a total of around 30 spaces.
So that would still put you above the 593 required, though. That puts you at 597, correct?
Correct. But again, if we're, if we're having this trail hub and numbers of the public are expected to be able to park there, we'd like to have above that number.
I understand what you, you know.
Yeah.
And then as far as the refuse area, that's a single area on the northeast corner? Is that correct?
Correct.
And I heard about the, the compacting and all that. Have you used that concept in other properties for this?
We use that concept at all of our projects and properties.
For the number of units, number of people, and number of amounts? I mean, is that a daily that you have to empty that, or what's the frequency?
Empty the compactor?
Yes.
It's probably a few times a week. It depends on the size of the compactor and, and the number of residents. We haven't run that calculation yet, but it's likely to be two to three times a week, I'd say.
And the garages, are those, is that just like carports? Or is it, they have garage doors?
They have garage, they have garage doors.
Okay. All right, no other questions at this time, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Ellis, any questions of the applicant?
I've got a couple, not very many. Mr. Wapner, the narrowness of the drive aisles, I've heard a couple of questions. So obviously, I guess you have to have that to get in what you think is the necessary number of parking spaces that can work. Is that right? Is that the only reason for all these narrow drive aisles?
Yeah, correct. If we were to increase them, we'd have to eliminate a row of, a row of parking to get the, to get the required 25 feet, or 24 feet drive.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, have you looked at doing angled spaces with one-way aisles? So you could have the narrower? Typically, you do have more narrow aisles with that. And you, you know, you don't have that perpendicular spacing? Would that work?
We haven't looked at that. I know that typically, you, you are right, usually you can narrow the aisles a little bit. You often lose quite a few spaces at the end. So we'd have to see if that is worthwhile or not.
Okay. That was just a thought I had. The ODOT, are you guys doing, are you in the midst of a traffic impact study right now?
We are in the. We have not started one, but it will be required as part of the project, correct, Mark?
Correct. We are getting it, we will be getting it scoped. We're getting the middle of getting it scoped as to what the traffic impact study will be involved with.
Okay, Mark. And ODOT's not going to make you, if, if you don't control that property, which probably is some kind of easement over it because it's been used forever for this property. But that's not a zoning question. But assuming you don't own that, is that really going to be a concern of yours? I mean, ODOT's not going to make you fix something that's not on your property? Or do you think they're going to make you guys do that?
Well, we don't, I don't know if I have that answer right now. We're starting with ODOT right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I spoke with the, I spoke with the adjacent property owner, Mr. Hettelson, earlier today. I know he has a lot of concerns about a reduction. And he told me he looked up traffic incidents and found that it was extremely low over the past 33 years. So.
Well.
Including when it was a retail center and more heavily used.
Yeah, I, I speak to that, except for my personal use. I don't think it's going to be practical to turn that to a ride, ride out. And because there is viable retailers there now, and that's just not going to be practical. And.
Correct.
I haven't, I haven't experienced any problems there myself, although the, the traffic volume probably with the units. The trailhead parking, so I, that you are trying to fit that in and working with Paul and Anderson Township to try and do that. But how are you going to manage that? Because one of the things I think is important with good control of your property is to know who is there, who's coming in and out of there, who's supposed to be there, and who is not supposed to be there sometimes. How, how is having this kind of a shared parking lot with the public going to impact that? Or do you not see that as a problem?
Well, I think that there are ways to deal with it if it becomes a problem. We anticipate most people wanting to use the trail to try to park near the trail. So we have to talk more with Anderson Township about it. And it was, there was a comment in their staff report about some identified parking. So it may end up that we have a set number of public parking spaces that are marked as such with signings that the rest of the parking spaces are private. And if it becomes a problem, we can give permits to our residents so that if you're parked in a private spot, you need to have a tag on your vehicle.
Yeah, okay, it sounds given some thought then. My, my last question is, the design is tremendously different from last time. I ask you, Mr. Wapner, were you this, and I apologize, I just don't recall. I think it was the same company, was the applicant last time? Or are you guys different?
We're, we're a new, new developer who's looking to, I, I believe Parkstone Capital, the current owner, they may have been on the previous application.
Yes.
Metropolitan Holdings, our, our company, who's looking to purchase the property to do this development, was not involved previously.
I got, I got.
So we have a much different proposed plan.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Gothard, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Mr. Hansen, any questions of the applicant?
You know, the downside to going last here is that your questions get asked, and sometimes get asked more than once. But kind of to, to continue beating on that poor dead horse with regard to the parking aisles. It does, I mean, it does seem pretty obvious from this slide here that by, by removing one half of, one of the rows or one row, if you want to look at it that way, on that northwest corner, and maybe five or six off of that triangle on the eastern side, that you, you are going to get the aisle widths, and you're still going to get, you're going to meet the requirements. And is, is there a stronger case that you may want to make for resultant, like 30 spaces? That that probably commuted adds up to?
We've looked at a, a lot of our, our projects and similar projects by other developers here and calculated the parking ratios that, that we're using and they're using. And they all come out to around 1.75 spaces per unit. And so we're really trying to get there. Because like I mentioned before, we believe that a lot of people will want to have guests and friends and family over to visit, to use the amenities. And combined with the trailhead, and if this were something that we felt wasn't feasible, we wouldn't be proposing it because we need, we need to rent these units. And to rent the units, people need to have a place to park. And so I guess we've, we've done projects and we've seen similar projects with these dimensions and not had a problem. I think, I would, we would agree that those dimensions are probably inappropriate for the main circulation around the site. But because some of these internal, more, uh, drive aisles where we're proposing them aren't the heavily traffic drive aisles, we believe there's adequate space to get in and out of them and to, to pass each other. And but by doing so, we can hit that 1.75 ratio that we're really trying to hit, to make sure there's. Because there's not.
It don't seem that it's well considered.
There'd be street parking if all the spaces were full. But since we're kind of a, a little bit locked into this topography, it, it's hard to say that someone can just park on the other side of Beachmont and walk over here.
Well, sure. I mean, potentially, you don't really want to recommend that, that people, you know, start overflow parking into the commercial spaces. But at the end of the day, they are there as well. And I do also appreciate that, you know, you are only looking at these interior aisles and kind of around the periphery so that perhaps at the end of the day, they're going to be less frequently utilized. But again, I, I can't remember which fellow commissioner, commissioner recommended it. If you did look at the angled parking in those, that four, those four rows, you might also be only losing a handful, maybe a dozen spaces. So I guess at the end of the day, you are, you are able to, to meet your numbers. Maybe not the 1.75 ratios, but meet the requirements with some changes too. But again, that, that horse has been abused, so we can. And you also mentioned that you are going to have interior bicycle storage amenities. Are you thinking more like a, like a communal bike storage space? Or are these like closets on each floor I've seen, you know, for tenants? Or what are you thinking?
We haven't, we haven't gotten to programming all the amenity space in the building. It's likely we could end up with a bike room. We are certainly planning on having enclosed tenant-specific closets essentially for storage available. So someone could choose to put their bike in there, or they could choose to put their Christmas decorations in there.
Right. The other question I had was just with regard to the ground floor. Are there more entrances than the main entrance? And I'm thinking most particularly about that western side. Is there an elevation that shows any entryways that may or may not be over there?
Yeah, so this is.
Okay, so there's a couple.
Yeah, so this is, sorry, it's not, it's frozen here. So on the west side, we have, we have an entrance. I apologize. This is a mark, large file, so it lags sometimes. On this western side, we do have an entrance. And then we have a couple kind of on the, on the north towards the west and, and more entrances all, all the way around the perimeter. Everywhere where there's a stair tower, which are kind of shown in white on this drawing.
Thank you, those are the questions that I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. I do have a couple of questions of the applicant. For the compactor and bulk storage on, on the northeast property line, is that a totally enclosed structure?
It's, there'll be walls around three sides and then a gate on the front.
Okay. And what would be the height of that proposed enclosure, then?
I'd have to look at similar ones, but I can't imagine that it's anything over 12 to 15 feet tall.
What's intended to be in the bulk storage area?
That's also enclosed and fenced in. And that's a place for people to throw away their sofas or other furniture, mattresses, so that it's not just sitting off on our site as an eyesore.
Okay, so not really bulk storage as much as bulk waste?
Bulk trash, yeah, bulk trash.
And then to clarify, Mrs. McBride was asking about the proposed walls to the north. It looks like that would be above grade on both sides of the wall. Based on your description, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. That's and that's a separate wall from what exists there now. It would just be something above grade on both sides at the fronts of the parking stalls.
Okay. For the garages themselves, what would be the exterior material of those?
Similar to the building. A combination of some masonry and cement-based siding products.
So no eaves on those those walls?
No eaves on the garage, just probably mostly siding with a with a water table. We haven't designed those garages yet.
Okay. And would that be a single slope towards the rear?
Again, we haven't designed them, so they'll be submitted later with our final development plan and everything. But either a single slope towards the rear or a gable roof.
Okay. And then I guess another person speaking about parking, you talked about, you know, sixty-six percent of the spaces would meet zoning code, but only if the eighteen-foot depth of the parking space is granted. Not, you know, real.
Oh, yes, correct, correct. Sorry, they would meet sixty-six percent meet the drive aisle requirement. Sorry, thank you for the clarification.
And, you know, because we always like to give ideas is currently where you're showing the twenty-two-foot aisle to alleviate some traffic issues. If that is truly a one-way eastbound and do angled parking, you may be able to gain some width to distribute that width across the twenty-foot spaces and not have a significant impact on your total parking count. Because on one-way angled parking, you can reduce the width of the drive aisle. And, you know, your concern of people driving out that aisle, you know, also help being alleviated by having that one way towards the eastbound traffic.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Yeah, these are all, we'll have to go back and study that. I can't answer that now.
So, you know, I think you've heard from most of the commission members, you know, concern about the twenty-foot aisles. And, you know, I think this commissioner also is sort of those same concerns.
I'd like to just talk a little bit about about these drive aisles. I mean, I I appreciate.
Could you say your name?
This is Matt McCasey. I'm I'm one of the owners. And, you know, I guess, you know, I mean, we've been doing these projects for a while. And like I said, there's a number of projects that are very successful. We've got a video that shows that really there's no issue. And I think we're trying to work really hard here to address your concern with the twenty-four foot around the building. We're really focused on that. And, you know, just we're trying to provide as much parking as we can so we can deal with the trailhead. And this is going to be a place where people are going to move in. They're going to have all their friends come over on the weekends, and there's going to be a high demand for for parking. And so we just want to make sure we have that parking here so we can meet the needs of our tenants. And we, like Andrew said, I mean, we wouldn't design these aisles at twenty feet if we didn't think people were going to successfully navigate and park them. So I know it's contrary against your code and maybe something new for you to consider, but, you know, we wouldn't be making the investment in this if we didn't think that it wasn't going to be successful and wasn't going to function properly. So. But just and and we also want to maintain a nice landscape drive aisle width so we can really plant some nice landscaping between the retail and our and our parking lot in our building. You know, those are really the reasons, those three reasons are really what's driving it.
Yeah, we've done, we've done our geotech borings and soil depths are actually fairly shallow here due to the proximity of the cliff face. And so we we really want those trees to be able to thrive. And with shallow soil, if we cut that median down too much, we're we're just worried about that.
All right, well, thank you for that. Any commissioner have any additional questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I would just just like to make one additional comment. If the applicant is really concerned about the number of parking spaces, there is another way to deal with that, and that's to reduce the number of units.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comment there, but, you know, there's always financial pressures on these projects to make it work. And, you know, there's pressure from, you know, we've got, the the project's got to be financially successful. And, you know, we're working really hard here, and I think we're almost there. And, you know, we we just don't think it's that big of an ask from our opinion, especially because we have seen successful layouts like this work. And if we didn't have that, we've demonstrated that we provided five projects, five site plans of projects there where that have been built and are successfully operating. And so we're just trying to say, we just wanted to have the same opportunity to do the same thing.
Everybody's entitled to their opinion. This commissioner drives a Nissan Armada, which is a very large SUV. And I do an awful lot of multifamily development work from a zoning perspective, and I have yet to see somebody ask for that kind of reduction in the in the drive aisle. But again, not just one commissioner, so that's that's my thought.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioners have any additional questions of applicant at this time? Hearing none. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application, if you could please unmute yourself, state your name and address and any affiliation to the case.
This is Susan Beckman. I have the property around the center, and I think it sounds like a great idea. I think I've just spoken briefly with Andrew, and he's been very accommodating and and very knowledgeable. My my only, I have a little concern just because my property is landlocked in the back there, and they did say that they would work with me to have a space to go through to get back to my property. I did have one question on the trash compactor. Is that a noisy, is that an automatic trash compactor?
Yeah, I believe so, but it's not something that's continuously running. It's only when I put things in.
I'm on this meeting, sorry.
Okay, I I just was wondering, I just wanted to make it clear that we were going to discuss and be sure we talked about having access for me to get back to where I need to get, and that if if it's near that trash compactor, that it'll be appropriately screened.
Yeah, Susan, I'll I'll continue to work with you on that. Again, this this was submitted, this site plan was submitted six weeks ago, I believe, well, well before we talked about it. So further iteration will probably make a modification in that corner for you.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of the application? Hearing no one else wanting to speak in favor, we will open the lines to anyone speaking opposed. And if you could just unmute yourself, state your name, and we'll start with that person, and we'll work through everyone so everyone has a chance. So anyone that'd like to speak opposed, please unmute yourself, state your name and address.
Hi, this is Sean. This is Sean Lyons. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Lyons. If you could state your address, please.
Five zero seven five Signal Hill Lane. I had numerous, numerous questions. I was a little bit disturbed by the lack of questions regarding the Signal Hill development and how it impacts that. People seem to be more concerned about the parking spaces than the community impact, and that bothers me a little bit. I didn't understand why the height variance was considered unsubstantial when they're putting a building in front of my house that's three times taller than the bigs. Very upsetting. They're making landscape variances very upsetting, and I did not think there was enough explanation for that. I don't understand what the bike trail has to do with this apartment complex, and I didn't hear any discussion about the flooding that occurs where this bike path is supposedly going to be built. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak opposed? Please unmute yourself.
Are you taking all of the opposing questions and comments before addressing those by individual persons?
Yes, any anyone speaking, you know, opposed or in favor, we want to take all their comments. And then the applicant should be taking notes. And also, I'm taking notes to address any sort of comments that may come up that we can't address at this time.
Hello, Jason County, five zero four five Signal Hill Lane. I'm one of the houses right above the the development. So a couple, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Conte.
Okay. I I also am the current president of the Homeowners Association for the Estates of Signal Hill. And I I too have concerns with respect to the impact on the property values at Signal Hill, specifically those along the ridge. I did notice as I think it was Mr. Lyons that spoke earlier, that talking about essentially doubling the height of what the maximum height allowance was, and the prior proposal was a couple of feet higher than that, but now we're talking about doubling it. And that's a significant concern on sightlines for those houses that are above there, that are some of our residents in the estates. And there are, there are some legitimate concerns there. The other issue that that I think needs to be explored, and frankly, I'm not sure how the commission could approve the variance tonight because, you know, in the presentation, we heard about an increase in the number of units from, you know, two hundred and forty-six, I think, to three hundred and sixty-one, which is a thirty to forty percent increase. I didn't see any traffic impact study on that. I didn't see any plan for ingress and egress, really. I didn't see how the alterations that were sort of glossed over with integrating it with the bike trail were going to be dealt with and what impact that might have. There was a reference to maybe a signal light or something. And and to me, that stuff all has to be explored. What I would like to see is a firm plan on the what what it's going to be, what the ingress and egress is going to be, what the integration is going to be with the bike trail, how it's going to integrate with Beachmont Avenue, how it's going to integrate with Route thirty-two. And then after we after we see that plan, let's have a traffic impact study done, and let's see what the real impact is going to be. Instead of doing a substantial modification that just gives a developer carte blanche to essentially do what they want, you know, with promises that are vague and ambiguous at this point. So that that, I think, is what we would like to see. I would note on the height issue again, that this variance, just based on some initial research, I think if this variance is approved, we're talking about putting the fourth highest building in Anderson Township right here in the backyard of the residence of the Estates of Signal Hill. That that's substantial. That's not insubstantial. The fourth highest building in an area that's not predominantly a commercial area or something like that, my guess is the other three buildings. I think the other three buildings are commercial buildings, office buildings, and the like. And that that would be a substantial modification. I think the the prior variance where the height was slightly above the height, you can argue is reasonable. To double the height, I don't think is reasonable. And I do think that there was a graphic shown where the sort of showing the sightlines of where the five stories will go to and the house there. I'm not sure if that takes into account the houses that were that are, there are two lower houses, and there was a picture from like the top of the driveway, but the picture didn't show is that it goes down substantially from there. And I think maybe that that was that that graphic was showing the height of the ridge and not counting for the for the two houses in the Estates of Signal Hill that are lower than that. And so I'm not sure exactly what's going to be impacted there, but I think there's a risk, a substantial risk that we're going to impact some property values here, and that needs needs to be taken into account. And a modest increase in height, I think, might be reasonable. Doubling what the county's own requirements are and allowing that level of variance is significant. You know, the the other thing is, is we're talking about a substantial modification. So essentially, what's happening is we're having all these modifications go through at a time at one time as opposed to separating them out. And obviously, I've sat here and heard the committee's concerns about the parking and those sorts of things. The estates have concerns about the height and about the density increase, which is substantial. And and so I think there are a lot of concerns here, and to just grant a substantial modification without fleshing this out, especially the traffic impact, I I think would be a mistake because there's no clear plan, at least that I saw, and there's no traffic study. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Conte. Anyone else like to speak opposed?
Yeah, this is Tony Gilio. I'm at five zero seven three Signal Hill Lane. My property is directly north of the property in question. In fact, if you went back to Mr. Drewry's report, you'll see that my house is the one where they actually took the photo right in front of showing down. I'm I'm also a member of the Signal Hill Homeowners Association, a licensed real estate broker in many states, including Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, Virginia, and Florida, so I know a little bit about real estate. As we talk about this major modification, as Mr. Conte indicated, what that really means is the developers can ask for multiple variances and waivers in one rezoning request without having to ask for each variance individually. So they're able to package up all of these things into one nice, pretty box and ask for them all to be approved at once, which really puts the homeowners here at a disadvantage. There are three major items which need to be addressed. Most of these have already been covered: traffic, building height, and sound. You know, when you look at the ODOT study that's done regarding the eastern corridor, the the projects are rated from high, medium to low. ODOT has given a high priority to install a bike and a walking trail in the area. There may be others, but nothing directly related to the traffic with the exception of a signalized green tea intersection at thirty-two and Clough, and to potentially add a turn lane from Speedway to Clough, which they've categorized as a medium priority project. So ODOT is saying that a bike and walking trail has a higher priority than a center turn lane on Clough Road in front of the Speedway as a medium priority project. I have grave concerns around a three hundred and sixty-one unit building with over six hundred parking places. And if I'm reading this correctly, we have six hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces for residents, plus a hundred and seventeen parking spaces for the commercial traffic that is there. And oh, by the way, we're talking about adding a Starbucks drive-through, which we all know is going to increase the traffic significantly. We have one signalized intersection. We have another intersection that they're asking now for egress through a neighboring strip center, which, as we all know, we can probably predict the majority of the people, the majority of the residents coming out of this apartment building, apartment complex, are going to avoid that traffic light like the plague, and they're going to come out that non-signalized intersection. Structure being proposed is almost three times the height, I'm sorry, almost two times the height limit of a building in Anderson Township. Are there other buildings that that are near this height? The answer is yes, but it may surprise you that there are only three other buildings in Anderson Township currently taller than what's being proposed. Mercy Health Patient Tower, and by the way, this is information data from Mr. Drewry, who, by the way, thank you for your your help with all of this because you've responded to all questions that we've had, so I appreciate that. But the Mercy Health Patient Tower is a hundred and seventeen feet, seventeen inches tall. One Anderson Place, which is at Tower Town Center Way, is a hundred and one feet tall. And then we go down to the AMC Town Center Theater, which is seventy feet tall. That puts this building, as Jason indicated, in number four. It might surprise you that the other two buildings are the Vantage Town Center Way at sixty feet, and the other one is the Belterra Park, which is only sixty feet tall. So we're talking about, you know, commercial structures. The one common element of those other five buildings is that they are commercial structures. This will be the single largest residential structure in Anderson Township, which, by the way, abuts a neighborhood of residence. You can call this building a four-story building. I don't care if you call it a two-story building. It's sixty-seven feet tall. As a real estate person, I would tell you that this is a five-story As a real estate person, I would tell you that this is a five-story building, any way you slice it, any way you dice it, you can call them pop-out mezzanines, you can call them whatever you want to. It is a five-story tall building. That is significantly above the use and density for this area. We all know the reason why they're going, well, maybe we don't, maybe I should, maybe I should explain. The reason why they're going higher as opposed to wider is for cost. It's a lot cheaper to go up than it is to go out. This, this organization, you know, is probably funded either through a real estate investment trust or venture capital or however it is. They're in it to make money. They're a, a company coming here from Columbus, Ohio, a Buckeye company, and we're happy that they are part of Ohio, but should we really be allowing a company from Columbus, Ohio to come into our neighborhood and, and ask for a building that is essentially double the height requirement? The monument sign out front, why do we need a monument sign for an apartment complex and a handful of potential retail establishments? I think Big Ash has enough signage out front for them right now. They don't need a, a sign, a, a space on the sign. And then when we talk about sound, the proposal is to put the 361 AC units on the roof of the building. That's going to be an eyesore to the residents above. It's going to generate sound probably 24/7. I don't care if it's 74 decibels or 30 decibels. It's going to be something that has an impact on those of us that sit above this particular proposed development. The noise is going to be substantial. Someone did ask one of my questions, which is what is the noise level of the trash compactor? Now we're hearing about this bulk storage, which it's, it's a place for mattresses and sofas. How often is that going to be cleaned? Am I going to have to look at that? Because I looked down on the site, is it going to be covered? How are we going to address these trailhead spots? Are they going to be designated? How many parking spots are there for the trailhead? And, and do we need, you know, do we need this grand amount of parking places? The Stormwater Detention Basin, I think, needs to be brought up to code to the current building standards. That detention pond is probably at least 25 or 30 years old, so I think that needs to be looked at and addressed. When we talk about zoning, we're talking about something that is meant to protect and maintain the quality of life and property values. End of day discussion, this particular project at 67 plus feet tall with the number of parking places that are, that are being added and the density that, that's being proposed does not maintain quality of life and property values for those of us who are directly impacted. We keep hearing about the change in the grade. That does nothing to impact the sound or the traffic or the building height, right? So, I would just ask this commission, it is, it is their responsibility to perform additional due diligence on this development. We need traffic studies, we need an impact study, we need a height study. Unfortunately, because of the timing and, and when this meeting fell, as, as it came from, when, when this recommendation came out of the Hamilton County Commission, we, as a neighborhood, have not had time to put together our own vision of what this is going to do to us. We're looking at hiring landscape architects to show us what impact this is going to have. We've seen nothing other than one little building that, that's up on a hill to know what this is going to do as far as impact. So again, I ask this commission to not vote on this this evening until we have more information from all the different parties that, that are involved in this, including the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drewery, I would ask of you, based on some of the comments that came in, if you could speak to the process, knowing that this, you know, plan will have to go through a series of different reviews, et cetera, et cetera. So the people in the audience may have a better understanding of the traffic studies that have been talked about, you know, et cetera. So if you could talk about the process, based on the action that would happen to that tonight, possibly tonight.
Yes, thank you. As Mr. Gothard stated, this is the second public hearing for the zoning process to look at the zone change. It's called a substantial modification because it's different than what was approved in 2018. So, it, in essence, is a rezoning of the property. They're comparing this to what was approved in 2018. So that's the term substantial modification. The plan routed to all the county agencies, and you'll see that in the staff report. Some of the agencies, though, cannot necessarily comment at this time due to the level of plans that are set at this time. If the zoning commission makes a decision tonight or at their next meeting, or whenever they make a decision, it's a recommendation to the Board of Township Trustees, who have the ultimate authority to approve or deny its own change. If it is approved by the trustees, then the next step is to develop a final development plan. And that is where Stormwater is looked into more detail. The traffic impact study will be finalized at that point in time. The Stormwater is reviewed at that point in time to, there have been preliminary reviews of the Stormwater, but more detail will be given. That is all reviewed between when a zone change is approved and the final development plan is, is submitted. So, not all of that level of detail will be provided during a zone change, but it is up to the zoning commission to review these other zoning implications and compliance with township plans and township compliance with the zoning resolution. Just, just one more comment to, the processes is a planned district. So it is appropriate for an applicant to submit all variance requests to be reviewed at one time by the zoning commission. That is the way the process is set up to look at the overall impact of the development and also assess the variances that are being requested.
Thank you, Mr. Drewery. I appreciate it. I think the audience has a better understanding of the process. So with that, we will open up, comment back to anyone else that would like to speak opposed? Again, please unmute yourself, state your name and address and any affiliation to this case.
Yes, I'd like to speak, please. Sean Calton at 5077 Signal Hill Lane. I'm not going to echo what Jason and Sean and Tony have spoken about, but one of the, one of the studies that needs to be done is a sound study for the rooftops on, on the roof or for the AC units on the roof. While I appreciate your, the applicant's due diligence with the sound and trying to equate what the decimal level is, I'd want an engineer to sign off on that for its impact. And then B, I don't think there's been enough done with the landscape study as far as what, what's going to be addressed at the lower level, but what are you going to do if any addressing at the top of the ridge for, to blanket any aesthetics or blanket any noise that's going to be emanating from, from the building itself. And that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak opposed?
This is Steve Valenti at 2709 Skytop Lane. I just had a quick question on the traffic studies that are planned. As most of you know, there's a lot of development that's gone behind Signal Hill State on Clough Pike. There's, there's, and there's more planned development there. So as you think about Clough Pike to 32, there's only one way out of this neighborhood. So then, then you put this development on the front end with the space. So I'm wondering if that egress from our neighborhood will be part of the traffic study, given what's going on behind us and in front of us. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak opposed?
This is Sean, 5075 Signal Hill Lane. One point I'd like to make is that they put all these units on a rooftop. And when we asked them about that, their response was, we can't put them on the ground floor because that would be aesthetically unpleasing to our tenants, which I couldn't agree with more. Unfortunately, my house looks out on their roof and their ugly air conditioning units. And I would like the committee to take that into consideration when they're putting this 67 feet up instead of 30 or whatever was originally approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Anyone else like to speak opposed? Seeing and hearing no one else. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Okay. Seeing and hearing no one else speaking opposed?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. If you could please state your name and address, please?
My name is Leanne Berg and I live at 5069 Signal Hill Lane. I just wanted to go on the record, reiterating the concerns of my neighbors regarding the project. I'm also a homeowner at Signal Hill Lane. I have a couple of questions. One, regarding the question brought up by a trustee who said, what is the hardship in relationship to the variation, the, I'm sorry, the variance requested for the parking spaces? I would say in terms of the building height variance, what is the hardship? Three stories has been approved, why are they needing to go to five? I would also ask if you can explain what research and analysis has been performed and by whom that allowed staff to arrive at the conclusion that the character of our neighborhood would not suffer a substantial detriment as the result of granting the variance request? And can you define the use of the word substantial? I would specifically challenge any of the trustees to enter our development from the levee going east on 32, approaching the stop sign between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00 PM, and also ask you to attempt to exit our development around 7:30 AM or between 4:00 and 5:00 or later. And then state for the record that the addition of 600-plus cars into this area won't create a significant problem in traffic, not just for the residents of Signal Hill, but for all of Anderson Township in their commute. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak opposed? All right, again, I do not see anyone or hear anyone speaking opposed. So with that, if the applicant would like to address any of the items that have been brought up by the people speaking opposed?
Yes, and thank you, Paul, for clarifying some of the procedural items. So I won't get too much into that. As Paul mentioned, a traffic study will be done, that's part of the process. The ODOT will define with our engineer what the scope of that traffic study is and what they deem appropriate. And Mark mentioned earlier that he's working with ODOT to do that. So we'll, we'll study ingress and egress from our site and impacts on the surrounding area as they deem appropriate. There was mention of flooding with the trailhead. That's something that we'll have to look at. We are aware that that's in a flood zone. And so any structure we build there will be more of like a deck-type structure that allows water to pass through and meets any requirements, requirements of that. And then the, the resident who just spoke asked about hardship, and, and I'll get to height, I'm, I'm saving that for last, a lot of, there was a lot of concern on the height. We're trying to provide a, a certain level of amenities and a certain type of product. And the only way that that works is if we have enough units to pay for all that and to support it. And we also want to see the retail out here thrive. That's going to happen with more residents to help support that retail. And so we feel that going up to four stories is appropriate. It is true, we have some parts of the building that are five, and I'll, I'll get to that when I talk about height. But that's why we're asking to go taller. One, one question was about what are we going to do at the top of the ridge? I'd like to note that we do not own the top of the ridge. The top of the ridge is a different, actually, the entire cliff is differently an owner. Ms. Speckman, who spoke earlier, she's the owner of the property directly north of us, between us and the residents on Signal Hill Lane. So let's talk about the height for a second. I've got the same diagram that, that Paul had. This site section was taken directly through our site. Our landscape architect put this together based on the survey. There, there's a house directly north of us that this section goes right through. That house is one of the lower houses. And that was brought up, that we may have done this through one of the higher-up houses. We did not, we drew this section straight through our site through to the north. As in this, as is stated in the staff report, the, there's an approximate 100-foot, 106-foot grade change between those houses up there, the, the lowest of those houses up there in our project, being 67 feet, that still allows 30 to 40 feet between our highest point and the base of those houses. I, I think the residents seem to acknowledge that the building is shorter than their houses, as they've mentioned a number of times, that they will see the AC units on the roof and will look at what we can do to help screen those. I'd like to point out, they currently look at AC units on the existing retail as can be seen in some of these photos down here to the right. So that's really not a, not a change, change for them. Also, as part of the zoning code, it's not a strict 30-foot height limit, it's 35 feet, unless there's a setback of a certain amount, the height of the building from the property line. So while we're closer than 67 feet to our property line, we're not closer than 67 feet to any of the residents because of the property in between that's comprised of the cliff.
Can you tell me what add, this is?
Please, please, no, no questions of the applicant. All questions need to be addressed to the commission, and let's let the applicant finish his statements concerning the previous comments. Thank you.
One of the, one of the speakers also brought up putting the AC units on the ground versus the roof. Typically, we find that most planning commissions and zoning commissions prefer rooftop units. This is a unique condition where we do have residents on top that will see them on the roof, and so we can look at what options we have to screen there. But if they were on the ground, they'd also be visible of, it's true, all of our tenants, all of the customers coming to the retail, they'd probably be visible from Beechmont as well. So, we believe the roof is the appropriate place to, to place those units. One, I've created another diagram here. So this, this is our roof or our floor plan. The areas colored in blue are the areas that are five stories that have the pop-up. The units are accessed on the fourth floor and they are dens and apartments or dens and bedrooms that extend up a fifth floor. We felt that the building would be rather bland if it were a straight four stories across and didn't have any variation in character. So we've decided to, to ask to be able to pop up at some of the corners to add architectural style and character to the building. However, as you can see, everything in white, the majority of the roof is only 48 feet to the parapet and 45 feet to the top of the roof. And I believe that that answers most of the questions that I had, that I had.
A couple of questions from my, my notes were concerning the detention, studying that?
Sure, that's, I guess I filed that under things that happen as we progress. That'll be part of the FDP process, as Paul mentioned.
Yeah, and that, really, you have to look at pre-development conditions to let the audience know, not as it exists today. So it's kind of bringing it back to, you know, years and years ago, when they're looking at that detention basin for this development.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rosenberg on the detention. The detention is, is existing and it does meet the requirements for this development. The only thing that we have to change is we have to address water quality, which there'll be some water quality components that we have to include into the site plan. Again, that's under the final development plan process. So that's currently where the detention stands.
Okay. All right, I think some of the other items have been addressed. So with that, you know, I would like to see if any of the applicants or any of the people that spoke opposed would have any additional comments, again, based in fact, knowing that this process is just the beginning of a multi-layer, multi-jurisdictional review. We're just looking at the underlying zoning as Ms. Drew stated. How the application applies to that and any variances?
This is Tony. Tony, can I speak really quick?
Come ahead.
So just going back to the traffic study.
Could you please state your name and address again, please?
Dan Scollin, Alameda 5082, Signal Hill Lane. I'm just going back to the clarification on the traffic study. Who, Andrew, you mentioned that it was going to be ODOT and your engineers conducting the study. Is, Paul, is there anyone from the county that is going to be represented as part of that study as well? And can, can someone from Signal Hill hire someone to be part of that study as well?
So this is Paul with the township. Beechmont Avenue 125 and State Route 32 are both maintained by the Ohio Department of Transportation. Those are the engineers and those are the ones that require the traffic impact study and would require the applicant to address any concerns. So they are the township's engineer for those particular roadways.
So, so if the, so if the applicant is providing the, it's just the applicant and ODOT, we have, we have no representation on part of the neighborhood to provide our own engineer to be part of that process as well, to have some input? Because that could be steered very easily.
The process is, those are ODOT-maintained roads and they are the agency that would review the study. And they would be the ones that would work with the applicant to determine what needs to be done.
Andrew, are you okay with someone from the neighborhood hiring someone to, to, to kind of just tag along and, and represent the neighborhood as we're going through this traffic study?
I mean, if you want to hire your own engineer at your own expense, you're more than welcome to do so and we can provide, we can provide the study to them and they can analyze it, just as ODOT will. I mean, it's, it will, the study will be, will be published as, as part of the process. So it's, it's a public document and we can give that to you.
But do you have a problem with doing it in conjunction with, with, with you, with ODOT?
I, I'd have to speak to you in more detail about what that necessarily involves. I wouldn't want to agree to that and then you tell me it's going to take you a year to find an engineer, for example.
I got you.
You know, so.
Well, I, I think that however long it takes for you to come out with you and ODOT, your engineer and ODOT to come off the study, who knows how long it's going to take before we actually see that report and do anything to affect change or do anything to, to, to affect change at all? So this is why I think it needs to be tandem, go hand in hand. But it's not in an adversarial way, just in a, let's, these are the concerns I don't think people are taking into consideration and let's, let's work together.
And this is John Gothard. You know, I don't know if the study, as defined by ODOT, if another party is going to come in and influence that in any way. It's more of how you take the data that comes from that, you know, that traffic impact study and how you apply it and any remediations. So, you know, I, I don't know how anyone would affect ODOT.
Well, the applicant, the applicant has got their own engineer working with ODOT on this. But there's no, the people most directly affected by the, the traffic study is this neighborhood. And we should have some representation in that study, I would think.
I, I think this conversation should be with ODOT and ODOT is representing you as well. It's their roadway and it's 32 is also their roadway. So this is a conversation that you can have with ODOT also, just to understand what their process is and reviewing their, their study.
Andrew, are you comfortable with me reaching out to ODOT and asking, basically asking the same thing?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I can't prevent you from doing that. So I, I welcome you to be part of the, to, to reach out and be involved.
Perfect.
Yeah, so again, I think that's.
I mean, like, like what was just said, I mean, this, ODOT really dictates to us what the requirements of the study are and, and tells us what, what traffic counts that we need to go and take. And then we take those counts and, and they review them and, and tell us what, what we need to do based on that, so.
Okay, so I really think this is more in ODOT's hands and as resident of the state of Ohio, you can read that. Okay. So with that, hold on, someone else who had some questions, I believe?
Hi, Jason County again, 5045 Signal Hill Lane. Just a couple of, one, since we were talking about the traffic study. I understand ODOT does the traffic study. Maybe what Dan was trying to get at is, is there, will there be some sort of commitment by the developer that we would have a voice in the remediation and the plans to remediate the issues found at the traffic study? Right? So, but I, I understand that ODOT is going to come out and do a traffic study and they're going to say, as they say, what the impacts are. And then there's going to be remediation efforts, you would think, undertaken. You know, to have a voice in what those remediation efforts would be beneficial to the neighborhood because it does impact us more than anyone else. The, the, the second comment I just had, the comment about the AC units and the fact that there's, there's AC units on the commercial development that's up there. It's kind of apples and oranges. The, the, the units are not nearly in the volume of what's being proposed in terms of numbers. It wouldn't nearly be at the height. I think it's apples and oranges to say, well, there, there are AC units up there now, one and a half or two-story building that are not nearly in numbers that we're talking about in this type of development. So that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Hi, it's Tony. I'm sorry, go ahead, mister.
Oh, I was gonna, I'll let him finish, respond, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, in the previous comments, I don't see anything that is something that can be responded to. Is this sort of regeneration of previous comments? So go ahead with your name and address.
Well, one, one thing, I'm sorry, just to jump in. The one thing that I would ask a response on is whether the neighborhood would have a voice in the remediation efforts on the traffic study.
Well, I, I think, I'm going to speak, I guess, as a commission member. I don't know at this point in time if anything can be identified as a remediation that impacts your driveway that's on 32 that's not associated with or adjacent to this property as far as its access into 32. I think ODOT has to chime in on that and make that something that the neighborhood brings to ODOT and says, you have a problem with where your drive from your neighborhood exits on 32 and the previous statements of turning left and right out of your development. ODOT can take that into consideration in their remediation efforts. I don't see where it may be impacted by this development, but until the traffic study is complete, no one knows what that may be.
Excuse me, this is Leanne Burke, 5069 Signal Hill Lane. I'm the one who brought that issue up. And what I was saying, the point I was trying to make is that 600 additional vehicles released on to Beechmont, which has to turn right or left and have to proceed down the levee or have to exit onto 32, does create an issue. It creates an issue for all of Anderson Township, not just for the property owners here. And how could it not? You're releasing potentially 600 cars out into traffic that only have two directions they can go.
And again, this is John Gothard.
If this development wasn't being allowed to have 600 potential cars to release, if they weren't having, asking for a variance that's probably going to be approved for five stories, there wouldn't be that many cars. There would still be impact because there's impact, we, we have issues right now. What we're trying to say is the, the development is going to increase those issues substantially.
Mrs. John Gothard, you know, until the traffic impact study is complete, we're all speculating.
Yes.
Let the process, let the process run the course and have ODOT be the expert because their, their roads to understand the impact, please, ma'am, please let me speak. Let ODOT and let the process work to understand any sort of impact before we, we speculate on what may and may not not happen. So, you know, I, I understand and we have this on, in the record that the traffic impact study will be completed. It will be per ODOT's requirements and it'll be a public record. At this point in time, I don't know what else we can do until that study is completed.
On the variance before that study has been completed. So you could potentially grant the variance for the additional height, meaning additional units, meaning additional parking spaces before any of us know what the impact would be.
Again, I'm not, let's, let's not debate this in this forum. Let's work with the process and let's move forward. Okay, you've stated, I, I believe on record, we have, you know, your concerns and that is part of the commission, you know, discussion and considerations. And, you know, again, the process that Mr. Drew outlined, there's multiple sort of layers after this, you know, action of tonight, or even if it's postponed, to go through before this development can go forward.
Mr. Chair, this is Paul again from the township. So just to, these meetings are a little quirky when they're virtual versus in person. So we have allowed opportunity for public input and we've allowed the applicant for rebuttal. For those of you in the audience, we do have a second case on the agenda. So we have, we may need to close the public hearing if the zoning commission feels. We have had public testimony. We've had rebuttal.
I think, you know, the public portion should be closed at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Drew. Everyone's been had an opportunity to speak with the applicant, rebutting, and even additional comment from the audience. So with the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question though of staff? And that is, in closing the public hearing, I don't want to preclude the fact that if we are to continue this, that we cannot receive additional new information from the applicant. And I think if we're closing the public hearing, that would, that would be the situation.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should rephrase that tonight, accept any more public testimony tonight until the zoning commission, once you've had your discussion. If, if you don't want to close the public hearing, obviously we wouldn't close.
We'll not close the public hearing. Public comment will stop at this point in time and then open up conversation amongst the commission members. So Mrs. McBride, you're on my screen, so you'll be first to go.
Lovely thought to have me on your screen, Mrs. McBride. So, you know, I'm really, I'm, I'm kind of torn by this. I understand the need to create the mixed-use development that is going to support the, you know, small businesses in Mount Washington and so forth. But I am also concerned about the significant height and unit increase that, that is being proposed over what was previously approved. And although I understand that we, as Anderson Township, and what I hope the residents understand is, we have no control over State Route 125, Beechmont Avenue, or State Route 32. That is totally the Ohio Department of Transportation. And if you go further up into the hill, then it's the City of Cincinnati Department of Transportation and Engineering. So at the township, we have no control over the traffic. However, having said that, in most of the cases that I've been involved with, the traffic study is typically submitted with, with an application of this magnitude where you're asking to significantly increase the, the density or at least the scope of the study has been worked out. So I, I have some reservations about not even knowing where ODOT might be on this. I mean, they might make it so that it is not feasible for the developer to move forward to given whatever their access restrictions might be. I don't know. I am concerned that there has not been much thought with regards to screening those HVA units, HVAC units, if they are to be on the roof, that they haven't given any, how those are going to be screened. Normally I would say that's a, a detail further on down, like detailed building elevations. But in this particular situation where we have single-family residential overlooking these buildings, I am concerned about that. I am just going to throw it out there. I am not going to support a reduction in those drive aisle widths from 24 feet to 20 feet. That is not zoning standard. That's not an ITG parking standard. That is, that is, I, I can't support that whatsoever. With regards to the signage, I, I think that the signage comply with our zoning resolution as the prior development did. They were dealing with the same topographic and the same vegetative state as, as these folks are. So I think that the signage should come into compliance. And, you know, I don't know what the rest of the commission feels about on things like noise and so forth. I don't know if there aren't enough open issues here that we don't want to give the applicant an opportunity to try to address some of these and then come back next month. That'll be fine.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Same thoughts I had to some degree. So, Mr. Lewis, any comments amongst the commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a very important aspect because this is the gateway to Anderson Township. And, you know, we want development in this spot because it's basically been undeveloped or, you know, been a moving target. We've made some changes, modifications. But I think it's incumbent on us to get it right. We want development, we want development that fits within the community, within the neighborhood. And again, as a gateway to Anderson Township. Details. So I, I agree with Commissioner McBride is I think, I think at this point, we just need more answers to the questions that have been raised rather than for us to pin everything down tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Ellis, any comments amongst the commissioners?
On this, oh, remember the last units that were proposed here a few years ago? These were very troubling. In fact, I was one, I think I was the only no vote. No, there were a couple, we had a couple of no votes on this. Some of us asked for what was pretty much exactly what the applicant is showing us tonight. A modern building, a lot of amenity, something that is architecturally modern-looking. I can't tell you how pleased I was when I saw, when I opened up these plans. I'm like, that's exactly what we asked for. And so that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is the traffic impact study. I totally agree with the residents and a lot of, some zoning places are like, you got to have the traffic impact study done comments so the zoning commission knows what's going on. First, ODOT, I hear what the residents are saying and they want to know what the traffic impact study says. The fact that ODOT is no pushover with these traffic impact studies. They, they make the developers walk a fine line. They first, if necessary, install tremendously expensive. They first, if necessary, install tremendously expensive improvements if it's necessary to maintain the safety. So, if the developer wants to go ahead with this plan at this point, and I am comfortable relying on what ODOT says at this point, that the risk is really on the developer because the developer may, has already put a tremendous amount of design resources into this, and they're kind of going on the fly of what, what ODOT's going to say. It's what ODOT is there for. Secondly, on the traffic, Ohio, Ohio law extremely restricts what you can and cannot approve because of traffic impact. I don't know where the residents are coming from on this, but we hear it all the time and it's a fact, we really can't deny this project based on traffic generation because every project generates traffic. So, if the developer wants to go forward at this point without the TIS, that's on them and I'm comfortable with it. Next thing on the density, everybody on the commission knows, we've approved projects that are way higher density than this. The fact is, I agree with what Mr. Wapner says, the developers to do a project like this, I mean, look at the picture of that thing. They've got to be able to do it in a cost-effective way, which means density. So, that's, that's their perspective. But my perspective is, this is where you want density because you can take advantage of the bike path amenity. And they've already shown how this is going to tie in and stuff. So, the density here works. I support that in this project to get a building of this quality. I also am very sympathetic, I hear what the residents say about, I've got to look over the top of this, I've got some issues with this. In looking at that profile, there's still a tremendous height difference between the two. Normally I might have a concern with a building like this looming over a residential, but the height variation, I think, makes that not as large of an issue as it might be other one. I think screening can be added to AC units quite simply. And that can be a final development thing. And hey, let's look at the alternative. What's there right now? Is it abandoned strip center sadly? And we need to get rolling on this to get that done. We have great opportunity right here. I'm, I'm in agreement with pretty much the staff remarks on this, except I would even go with the variance. I know it's, I think it becomes a management problem, but running from their tight for parking is because they're actually making their property available for public use. And that's, that's unusual. You don't really see, I don't think developers wanting that to happen. So, I would even be willing to support them on a reduction in the aisle width. So, I just wanted to make those comments. I'm prepared to go and vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Mr. Henson, any comments to the commission?
Brian, honestly, I could not have put that any better. Almost word for word, everything that you just said is exactly what I'm thinking almost entirely in lockstep. The one exception may be the 20-foot parking aisle width. I do think there's enough room there for the developers to get that to 24 and figure it out and also figure out how to, to live with the loss of, you know, two to three dozen parking spaces at this development. I think it can be done, so I don't think that that variance needs to be granted. We did also not talk about the crosswalks within the development, which would at least help get these tenants to the commercial out front. I think that's something that's important and staff has actually already covered it. So, if there is a motion tonight, I do want to make sure that those crosswalks are addressed in accordance with staff comments. I think those are necessary. But other than that, Brian, literally you could rather stamp your comments and put my name next to it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Henson slash Ellis. I appreciate it. I guess my comments are very similar to both sides of what was previously discussed. You know, the drive aisle widths, the high level building, mainly HVAC units for sound and visual impact to the neighbors are high concern. Understanding a little bit more of the traffic flow would also help this commissioner understand the impact to the neighborhood and not only the Signal Hill neighborhood, but any other adjacent neighborhoods, including Mount Washington. You know, there are things with the building that could possibly be done for the parapet height to reduce it slightly, but not, you know, impact the overall design. And with that, you know, it's sort of hard to understand maybe where the commission may be heading. If we wanted to entertain maybe a motion for the applicant to, you know, provide additional information based on the findings and discussions tonight at a future meeting to, you know, have a commission that's a little more informed, maybe an option. Or actually have a commission member make a motion to approve or to deny the application as it's submitted. So, with that, I'll turn it back to the commission members of somebody who would like to make a motion of one of those three or only the two motions, but also maybe asking the applicant to defer decision till a later date and supply additional information. Anyone have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I guess I would ask my fellow commissioners how they would feel about deferring it a month to get some additional information. And I understand, I mean, I agree with Mr. Ellis' comments about, you know, this is where density should go, absolutely. I mean, it's on a, you know, four lane highway. I mean, I get all of that. But I am sympathetic as well to the, to the residents that live above that. And I guess I would just like to find more answers to them for the application going forward.
Because I always go last, I'll go first this time. I, I would be in favor of the applicant providing the additional information to the commission. I understand it's possibly another month for that information to be obtained and submitted. And, you know, I don't know if we need to have the complete traffic study completed, but at least a definition of what the traffic study would be looking at. And the width of that, you know, does it actually get to Clough Pike? Does it, you know, how far east, west, north, south is that impact, or, you know, traffic impact study going to be encompassing as far as the scope? So, now you have my opinions first. Anyone else on the commission like to express opinion of Ms. McBride's, you know, idea?
This is Brian. I've heard, it sounds like at least three of the commissioners want a little bit more information. I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a motion to approve it tonight because I'm not hearing a favorable majority for that. And that's fine. So, I would like to see if we do get more information, just two things, which is a little bit of detail on how they might screen those rooftop AC units. And then secondly, maybe look at this parking a little bit more. Could they get the parking in there that they want with perhaps a little bit different configuration? Really, that's all I'm interested in seeing. I pretty much was agreement with the staff, you know, recommendations on all this, otherwise perhaps except for the aisle width. But that's what I'd like to see.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ellis. I think, I guess I feel I can go back to the applicant, Mr. Wapner, and see if you would like us to make a motion on your application or if you would like us to defer your application.
As I understood, it sounded like a motion would be made to defer it, I guess, for more information. Is that?
I mean, you know, that's kind of where I think we would be. But if you as the applicant would like us to make a motion that doesn't defer, I think I would entertain that if you want us to make a decision tonight. But, you know, taking all the comments that you've heard, want to get your input a little bit.
Well, as I understand it, this, this body is making a recommendation to the trustees who ultimately make the decision, correct?
Mr. Drury, that is my understanding, but.
Yes, that is correct.
So, what I, what I fear happening is every step of the way, people want more and more information all the time, which, which is a good thing to have information. But I'd be in supportive of making a motion to approve and deny with, with conditions that information be provided before we go to the next steps, if that's something that the commission can do or would be willing to entertain.
As a commission member, I'd just say, let's just be very specific on what we're asking the developer to come back with, so it doesn't go longer than it has to and we're very clear of what we're asking if we're going to delay.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. That's, I guess, what I'm fearful of is if we delay and then delay again because people want more information and then again.
And that's why I was, that's why I'm suggesting to be very specific. There's no, no gray area.
And, and Mr. Lewis, I, I agree. It's just, I think, trying to put those terms of, you know, how to screen the HVAC units, how to, you know, for sound and sight without seeing some sort of concept maybe from the developer of what they would prefer and their remediation. I don't, I don't know if we can define those exactly.
Well, no, but I think we've, we've given some parameters that we're not happy with a variance on the sign, we're not happy with a variance on the parking lane width. We'd like to see a more specific landscape plan, crosswalk plan, rooftop plan, and oh yeah, you know, obviously if we can get a traffic flow from ODOT. Those are my notes.
I'd like to talk about the traffic. I mean, the traffic study is a two-month proposition. I think Mark, I don't know if Mark Rosenberger's on the, still on the call, but, you know, we really don't want, we can't afford to lose two months in this process. You know, I like the idea of trying to address the specific concerns, but the, you know, I think as Mr. Ellis brought up, you know, we're willing to take the risk with the traffic study. We've spoken with Mark pretty thoroughly about it. We understand what's there now with respect to parking spaces and what, what we're proposing. And I think we're all comfortable moving forward that we're going to be able to address those issues and satisfactory dress them.
Okay, well, thank you. I think then, you know, just amongst the commission members, if somebody would like to make a motion?
If the screening can be part of like our FDP process, I mean, there's a lot of time there to, to submit details of our design, if that's a major hangup of the commission.
I think that's where I'm going to, you know, rely on a commission member to make a motion and how to define the aspects that we are needing additional information and/or responses to this, the staff report and recommendations. So, again, just amongst the commission, if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. In case 2-20, I'll make a motion that the zoning commission recommend approval of the application for the major modification. And as part of that, the motion will adopt all of the recommendations and conditions of the staff report, including approval of the variances and as well as with the exception of the requirement that the aisle width be, and that variance request is also approved, however, that the applicant be prepared to resubmit a final development plan, redrafted parking layout to determine the parking space count can be met with a different configuration. And also that with the final development plan, there'll be detailed, specific detail be provided showing screening of rooftop AC units.
I'll second your motion.
Mr. Chair, can we have discussion on the motion, please?
Yes, I was going to have that. So, Ms. McBride, please go first.
I, I just want to say, I mean, I'm in favor of the project. And again, I agree with everybody, the density and the look and all that kind of thing. But this is just too big a project to not have the specifics at hand, and I don't think the applicant does. So, if you're going to press me to vote tonight and, and to include the reduction in the drive aisle width and, and not bring the sign into zoning compliance, then my vote's going to be no, even though I support the project.
Were we allowed to respond to that comment right now or no?
No.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I think, I agree, I'm in support of, of the project. You know, I do believe there are voids within the submission that, you know, this commissioner would like to see, you know, infilled or, you know, at least build up a little bit more so the commission can make an informed decision. You know, we have a lot of items that are in variance mode, you know, with the motion, you know, the drive aisle was discussed, but, you know, are we going to be able to reduce the parking stall to 18 feet as a commission and for the precedence in that way? You know, so, you know, the applicant has asked us to make a motion and act on that, either for denial or approval. So, I guess, Ms. McBride, I just kind of want to reiterate, I agree with you to a degree of, you know, supporting the project, but maybe not the entirety of the application as it stands today.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment myself. Okay, so, the recommendation of this board does go to the trustees, but I do want to make it fairly clear to everyone, I think the trustees will have the same questions. So, is gain in time or momentum moving this? Since that we're ready to answer, the trustees won't make a decision either until some of those questions are answered. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. It's ultimately the zoning commission's decision, but I think the motion can be rescinded if you do want to continue it another month to get more answers to the question.
Again, this commissioner, the opinion is it's probably in the best interest of the applicant to defer. And I gave the applicant that option. But, you know, again, I will open it back up to the commission members if someone wants to make a motion to either second Mr. Ellis' motion or make another motion to defer or deny this application.
I believe Mr. Ellis' motion was seconded.
Yes, it was.
All right. So, I apologize, did I hear the, the second? The second? Mr. Henson, okay, thank you. So, with the discussions after Mr. Ellis' motion, do we want to, Mr. Ellis, you want to maintain your motion and Mr. Henson, you want to maintain your second?
I'm totally, I'm totally fine rescinding the motion. But I really liked Mr. Lewis' idea that if we're going to have them come back next month, that they know precisely what it is we're expecting so we can, next month. They're not going to have a traffic impact study done next month, I can tell you that right now. They might have a draft with recommendations, but ODOT is not going to have had a chance to look at that, let alone the neighbor, the neighbor group. Well, I'm fine putting it off. I just, we were going to force issue with the motion. I'm in favor of it, so that's what my motion is. And I'm okay rescinding. I'm okay rescinding it too, because obviously the commissioners have well-founded concerns, for sure. They support it, but they want information. I'm totally fine with rescinding it. I resent my motion. They support it, but they want information. I'm totally fine with rescinding it. I resent my motion.
I, I didn't want to make you rescind your motion. I just wanted to, after Ms. McBride and my comments, you know, I agree that
It's going to get delayed anyway. We might as well be the fact finder rather than just sit at the trustees, I suppose. That's what we're equipped to do. So like, like I said before, my specific wish list, and I think everybody should give their specific wish list right now, is I want to see what the, the screening would look like and is there a permit to the parking area? That's what I would like to see.
Okay. Mr. Henson, sent to you second? Discussion, please.
Need to rescind, rescind my second motion. But, um, to, to be, just to add additional comment, I, I think this, uh, the staff report was exceptionally well-prepared. And, you know, this is why we have professional staff preparing these reports. And I think, uh, if there was a checklist um, that I would prepare, it would mirror exactly what's in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I
Any additional things?
No, I, I think, you know, obviously I stated how, what I felt, and I believe, uh, uh, being, having a detailed list of the developer, uh, for continuance. I understand the traffic flow may not be available. I know that we can't do anything with that as far as what ODOT, it's, it's outside our control. It's more from an informational standpoint. I think it, it helps us get our grips around the, uh, the project as a whole. But, uh, you know, I had down again about the, the sign, the parking lane, uh, the rooftop plan with screening and the crosswalk as the four major points.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McBride?
Um, well, with that, um, not to step on Mr. Ellis's toes, but, um, I will make another motion. Let's try another one that we continue, um, case, uh, sorry, too much paperwork here tonight. Two dash, uh, twenty eighteen Anderson Skytop for fifty-two eighteen Beaumont Avenue. Um, and till our next meeting and that we would like to see additional provi- information provided on the following items. Um, that would be one pedestrian connectivity between, uh, the proposed multifamily development and the adjacent retail development as well as the uh, linkage to the, um, Little Miami Bike Trail as well. Um, two, that all of the, uh, required landscape material on the site be planted on the site, even if it's not in a specific area where it is required by code. Um, through, I'll go back and look at revisions to the signage so that it would comply with a zoning resolution. Four, that, uh, we obtain additional information on how visually and from a noise perspective, the HVAC equipment will be screened, um, from all public right-of-ways as well as adjacent residential districts and uses. Um, and, uh, that they continue to work with ODOT to develop the scope for the traffic impact study. Um, I feel fairly confident that that can be done in a thirty-day window. Um, and I think, oh, and, and that they go back and they look at twenty-four, uh, foot drive aisles, the parking areas.
Paul, can I ask a question of you at this juncture?
Uh, sure.
What, what zoning mechanism do we have that would require an applicant to screen rooftop HVAC, um, mechanical equipment from adjacent properties which are above the gate?
So the zoning district is a planned re-zoning district, um, which in the variances are being requested. So a couple of zoning mechanisms, you, you can place conditions on any type of, of variance request to help mitigate potential impacts of that variance. Also with this being a planned retail, modifications can be requested of the applicant to ensure piece of development within that zoning district in the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, uh, Ms. McBride's motion is still.
I would, I would second it.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Just a discussion point. Uh, Ann said the twenty-four-foot aisles, which is fine, and I think we should incorporate into that potentially the reduced aisles, but with a different parking, uh, stall arrangement that might accommodate the more narrow aisles.
Yeah, I would accept that amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. McBride? I think the second still stands, so.
Yeah, I'd still second that.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, can you please call roll?
Yeah, um, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Elif?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. So thank you, everyone, for attending, uh, this portion. We do have another case coming up. Um, if we could maybe take a five-minute break?
I'll second that.
Be okay with everybody and we'll re-adjourn at eight thirty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
They would be, uh, well, next slide, please. We'll get into more of the development. A little bit about the site history. Um, it's currently vacant. There was previously a single-family residence from the township purchased the property. As you know, this site was originally included with the Stone Gate apartment rezoning. Um, ultimately, there was proposed a third multifamily building, and that was later done by the applicant, and only two, uh, multifamily buildings were built by the Mayerson company. Uh, once this property was, uh, removed from running, it created a approximately three-acre, um, parcel for, for development, for future development. Next slide, please. Um, based off of the, the zoning for Stone Gate, uh, a pre-studied metal open house was held for this site in twenty eighteen when we could meet in person, and we actually met onsite around a fire pit, um, to talk to the neighbors actually onsite so we could see, um, the surrounding conditions and overall the consensus from the neighbors, um, they family homes on Stone Gate, um, Drive. They, they, um, didn't mind attached housing, but they felt that they should be lower in scale than what was proposed before with the multifamily building. Uh, December the third, Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of five conditions. This is the property with site in question. Again, to the north is Stone Gate Drive with single-family homes. To the west of the site, um, is the new Stone Gate apartment buildings. There are two buildings that were approved by the, uh, zoning commission. Directly to the south is one single-family residence, and then to the south of that, that home has been removed and the parking lot for the Sees Smiles dentist office has been expanded. And then, uh, there's also a church. And then to the east are single-family homes. Next slide, please. This is the zoning to B. Uh, again, the Stone Gate development is DD plan multifamily. Then that blue zoning is office zoning. Directly to the north is also DD multifamily. Next slide, please. Is an area of the site in question. The, the front of the site closest to Nagel is cleared and is a lawn area. The back is fairly wooded. And it's, it's primarily flat. There is a slight, uh, change in grade. This is the future land to, uh, from our comprehensive plan identified for institutional use because it was owned at the time the comp plan was updated in twenty sixteen. Um, and then, uh, you can see the surrounding, uh, land uses. Next slide, please. This is, uh, a picture looking to the west, a sustaining at Pine Terrace, which is directly across from the private drive where the private drive would, is proposed. Um, to the left of the photo, you see the existing single-family home, and then to the right of the photo are the Stone Gate, um, single-family homes. Next slide. Looking to the south, generally to the south and west to the existing single-family. Other side is one of the oak trees is mentioned in the staff report. The sidewalk that you see it's under construction as part of the Stone Gate zoning, it was, uh, required to install a traffic, uh, a turning lane into Stone Gate Drive. This is part of their traffic impact study by Hamilton County. So the sidewalk is, uh, being relocated ration to, for, to install that turn lane. Next slide, please. This is the other oak tree that you'll see mentioned in the staff report, and then you can also see a buffer of evergreens and a mound between Stone Gate Homes and the proposed site and development. Slide. To Beaumont, at the existing single-family home that will rain. This is looking north uh, on, on Nagel as well. Next slide. So looking at the site and Nagel looking to the west. This is the landscape offer in the mound between the single-family homes on Stone Gate and, uh, the slide. So this is back further in the site, looking south toward the, uh, Sees Smiles dentist office and the single-family home. Looking back toward Pine Terrace and actually in this picture too, you can see one of the the staff report. The private drive would line up with Pine Terrace. Site plan of the proposed development. Again, the private drive, the, the thirteen units would be accessed via a private drive. There is off-street parking that's also provided within the development in addition to, um, the drugs and the garage for the, the units. There is a turnaround. The detention basin is proposed in the, um, southwest corner of the property. I did the development to connect to the sidewalk along Nagel, and then the sidewalk will be hard along the Nagel frontage. It's currently a sidewalk that, that north toward, going towards Stone Gate that, that proceeds north all the way to state. Um, there are gaps in the sidewalk on this side of the street toward Beaumont, but there is one in front of Sees Smiles. Uh, there, there are gaps, but long-range planning does call for a sidewalk on this side of Nagel as well, south to Beaumont Avenue. The applicant is identifying, uh, a landscaping buffer or separation, uh, between the proposed development and the homes. And we can go to the next slide to look at the elevation drawing. The obviously is the front image of and which all of the units would have garages, two car garage. And then the rear elevation. Next slide. This is just a side elevation. Next slide. These are the agency reports. The county is going to require forty feet of right of way to be dedicated, half right of way. The other comment that we received was in from the Anderson Township Fire and Rescue relating to one of the fire hydrants toward the T turnaround needs to be located further north. Next slide, please. In looking at this rezoning request, we did look at compliance with the zoning resolution and the following are areas that are not in compliance. So the one is all off street areas, parking area. It'll be screened on any side that joins or faces any residence district. So there are two areas that will need to be screened. One is the the area that is adjacent to the Morgan probably that's the single family home that's proposed to be remain. And then the other parking spaces coming in from Nagel also would need to be screened from adjacent single family residences. The second item are sidewalks. The sidewalk needs to be provided along Nagel. And it is required to be five feet since Nagel is a county roadway, needs to be prevented, provided along the entire frontage of Nagel. Second, Article five point three D three A dimensions, the parking stalls need to be confirmed that they are the right size nine by nineteen. Next slide, please. These parking areas need to have wheel stops or curb. And then lighting plan was not provided. So it's unclear if the off street parking areas are going to be lit or or not. Next slide, please. Landscaping buffering, the parking spaces shall be shall be screened and then also staff is of the opinion that there should be buffering along the development of properties of Stone Gate. And then we can discuss the the two large oak trees in more detail. And no signage, sign was not on the plan, but no details have been provided regarding signage. The applicable plans, Anderson Township comprehensive plan, while it's not identified on the land use plan as multifamily or single family. It was identified as institutional because it was publicly owned. So there is guidance in the comp plan regarding how to treat institutional land uses and that's mentioned in the presentation. In in addition to looking at the density, the proposed density is five point six six units, which is in between a B two and a C zoning district. So staff feels that this density is compatible and is a good mix between the multifamily buildings and the the single family to the north and to the east. Next, please. Trails and walkway plans, we have talked about the sidewalks and then the township design guidelines. Staff is of the opinion that especially with the duplex unit, the units should have more architectural features on the rear because it is the roof line and the back walls of the duplex units are quite plain. Next slide, please. Township Tree Committee did provide a letter regarding the two oak trees and their significance to Nagel and the surrounding neighborhood. Felt that it was very important that these two oak trees be preserved. Their letter was attached and when we say preserved, they they felt that the two oak trees should be protected during construction and all efforts should be made to protect those. Anderson Township Economic Development Committee also submitted a letter in support as they felt that this proposed development was consistent with the comprehensive plan. So staff recommendation was to approve the zone change because of the following, one through four. Next slide, please. The five or the five following conditions were recommended by the Regional Planning Commission. Landscaping plan be submitted to further outline areas of buffering, a lighting plan be submitted, signage be compliant with township zoning regulations, sidewalks along Nagel as well as connected to the development. The guest parking spaces shall be revised to include a minimal ten foot buffer from adjacent residential property and to provide a thirty foot setback from Nagel and compliance with the zoning resolution. Township staff recommends the following three conditions, again regarding the landscaping. It's unclear if the landscaping mound that is existing would remain or if it would be partially removed during construction. As you could see, the mounding and the evergreens are getting to be fairly mature and provide a good screening between the two. So staff feels that the landscape plan should have more detail to to ensure that stands. The two large trees near the proposed entrance shall be preserved. The tree committee was recommending that they should be protected during construction and compliance with ANSI A three hundred standards for tree care. Specifically steps must be taken to protect the root system of each tree. The area disturbance shall be modified to address this condition. So the plans that were submitted show these trees within the areas of disturbance. But also there is a proposed eight inch sanitary line from Nagel that goes through the southern portion of this property that appears to be very close to the trees. So staff raised the question if this could be moved to possibly follow the water line to go along the private drive to minimize the servants areas for the trees. And then the parking dimensions shall be provided. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Mr. Henson, any questions of staff?
Yes, and I also apologize if I've got a eighteen month old who's going down in the other room who's having a fit. So I apologize ahead of time if you can hear some of that. The questions I had for this, Paul, the retention basin in the southwest corner there, is it meeting required setbacks from both the property line and the the adjacent building envelopes?
We don't have a setback requirement for a detention basin. So there's there's not a minimum requirement for the detention basins. My understanding is that that is the lowest spot on the property and then ultimately will tie into Stone Gate Apartments.
Okay, I'm I thought I was recalling that we had either a five or a ten, but you're saying there is no setback requirement for the basin?
Not for a detention basin.
Okay. And have we, we have not received any follow up documentation about the preservation of the gateway oaks or the the western tree stands at this point?
No, not yet. I think that'd be a question for the applicant tonight.
Okay, and then my last question just has to do with those five parking spaces near Nagel. There's nothing in our resolution that requires those five overflow spaces, correct?
I have a minimum parking requirement for single family and duplex and they are meeting the minimum requirements for our zoning resolution. The the width of the drive aisle probably will not allow for on street parking. So I know that is an attempt to try to provide spaces for.
I think I even saw the fire department kind of mandating that they do not park on the private drive. Yeah. Okay, I think the and the T stopper, I guess it's kind of like a hammerhead down there on the south. Is that also compliant with the setback?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Mr. Ellis.
Paul, I do have a concern that I won't pose in the form of a question to you right now about not seeing the landscape plan because there's some important landscaping things going on here. But the one question I did have is said something about additional grant of right of way on Nagel, is Nagel's a county road?
Correct.
Is is that additional right of way going to get into those oak trees, I wonder?
The, yes, it does put those trees in the right of way. It, yes, I mean, one completely in the right of way and the other, I mean, might as well, it's right, real close.
That's the only question I had.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Ms. McBride, any questions of staff?
Yeah, it was, I guess, just just one, Paul. Because I was confused, I always thought that mound was on the Stone Gate property because I was on the commission, we approved those homes. And I I thought that was on the Stone Gate property. But what I'm seeing on the on the applicants, the metal is it's only a two foot mound and it's it looks to me like it's more than that when you're out in the field, but that it's only two feet and all of the plant material is actually on the township's property, is that correct?
I believe it was determined that it was, it ended up on the township property.
And so that has the township, I guess, been the one maintaining all that? Because it's all mowed, you know?
I mean, we do mow the flat portion of the site. I don't know about maintenance of the mound, though. That may be a question. I I know there are some residents that live in those homes that probably answer that better than I can.
Okay, because I mean, it is all mowed, at least on the north side of that mound. So that was, that was my question. I was just very surprised to to learn that wasn't part of the Stone Gate development.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Lewis, any questions of staff?
Question about the the sidewalk on Nagel. I saw where it was stopped. You're talking about the developer extending it and but what about the continuity or continuance of that all the way to Beachmont? Is that part of the Anderson Trail Plan?
It is, there is a break. The Morgans that live directly south do not have a sidewalk in front of their home. There is a sidewalk in front of Sees Smiles and there is a sidewalk further south. But yes, ultimately, the plan would be to connect from state to each one. And the reason, yeah, the reason being the best place to cross is at state where the signal is in our area to get to Nagel Middle School.
Especially, yeah, especially for the students.
Correct.
Okay, and then when we talk about the trees, I I hope we also talk about reducing or eliminating the root structure, any disturbance to it. So.
Correct.
That's not quite, it's more of a comment than a question. Nothing else at this time, Paul. Jonathan?
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have no questions of staff with that, if the applicant would like to present their case. Please state your name and address and any affiliation.
Hi, my name's Edwin Farugia with Zicca Development Company. We're at seven eight six one East Kemper Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. Four five two four. I am the development coordinator for Zicca Development Company. First of all, thank you, Paul, for presenting information. I think I'll skip over the, I won't reiterate what Paul said about the it's everybody's got a grasp, that's a thirteen unit development and everything else. I'd rather been to the the issues, I guess, that people have regarding the landscaping buffer and the tree preservation. We agreed to pretty much everything that was on the conditionally approved list. Pretty much, we agreed everything. First of all, that that mound with the trees on it, as Ms. McBride mentioned, that the field, yeah, does look larger than two feet. I've been out there. There are, those trees are on our property and we haven't had officially staked out, but from looking at stands I've got in front of me appear to be on our property. We do get into those. We, if we get into that mound, I should say, we have full intention of you know, replacing that mound. If you find it, you know, as much people on Stone Gate want it, he would want it as well. As far as the two oak trees go at the, I guess, you're referring to as the gateway oaks, I believe. Have no intentions of taking those out. Sounds, I know I I was thinking about this today, I saw the pictures, I haven't been out there in a couple of weeks, but looking at the pictures, I don't know where that sidewalk is in relationship to that. But, you know, we have no intentions of taking those down as part of our development plan. And then the street lighting. We intend to have at least two, no more than three, streetlights. One would be located up by the parking spots, up by the intersection of the new private drive and Nagel Road. The other would be at the intersection. The, or the T intersection is further west in, as you go west into the development. And then if we did do a third, it would be on the south near that T turnaround area, the hammerhead, I guess, is what. And on the, on the architecture, as far as the or an architectural style to the rear of the buildings, we would intend to have a brick wrap or stone at least on a portion of the rear of the buildings back there that up to Stone Gate. We've got no issue with that. That's pretty much it. We're, we're on board. I mean, we know there was a comment that came in that I just saw today about parking spots up in Nagel Road. I'm not exactly one hundred percent positive on what the off street parking requirements are. But, you know, we'd be happy to move that up. You know, if we can and stay within the code, we would move it closer to the building or even eliminate a couple of those spots. But we're, I mean, we're open to make this work as far as, you know, any of the, as all of these conditions are concerned. Landscaping, we're going to have a landscaped entrance. Like I said, we're going to get that landscaping to the rear, whether either keep it in place or new landscaping into the the back of the buildings to the north. And we're also landscaping. We're going to put trees along the south side as well between our private drive and residence that is into the south of us. I think I covered everything on there. I think, I hope I did, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you guys have.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. Any questions of the applicant?
Uh, done this this time.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I I guess I just have to start and ask, why would you get into that mound?
As part of the grading for the site, we might not be able to avoid it. And we're going to avoid it if we can, but if we have to get into it a little bit, I don't think we'd have to remove it at all. I I don't think we have to remove the in its entirety. But I think as part of construction, we could potentially get in there. I mean, they're going to be digging foundations right up against the edge of it. There's going to be equipment. I guess the point being is we do have to get into the mound. We want the mound there, so we will replace the mound. As as just a part of construction, we might have to get into it a little bit.
I mean, I would really hate to see all of those mature pines or evergreens, whatever they are. Go away.
Yeah, and I I don't think it's a matter of the trees going away. I guess as part of construction, when we're building a slope or when we're doing grading, we are going to, we might cut into that mound a little bit during the construction process, but at the end, be restored back to its original slope. It wouldn't affect what we're, what we're doing with those pines. It wouldn't affect the trees themselves. And if it did, we'd replace them. They're on our property. Like I said, we want them there, just as much as the people on Stone Gate want them there.
Um, okay. I guess with the, Paul, with this, a quick question for you. Are we going to, we'll see a final development plan for this?
Yes, since it's a planned district, you will see a final development plan.
Okay, so just so the applicant understands that to this commission member would be very important for that final grading plan to preserve those trees. to preserve those trees and to not damage their root system. And I'm assuming you're agreeable to the preservation of the two oak trees and doing efforts, not efforts, but to maintaining them. In terms of lighting, are you looking like at coach lighting, you know, like 10 feet or something like that?
It'd be like lighting supplied by Duke Energy. We use one that's a downlight. It actually works really well. We used to use like a called it a gas light replica, but they don't do it anymore. They don't provide that light anymore. So what we've been doing is called the like a deluxe LED and the light actually comes from the top of it, shines down, really minimizes light pollution. It looks nice. We use them, started using about two years ago because the gas light doesn't work. They don't provide it anymore.
Okay. All right. Those were the questions I had, but again, I am really concerned about that mound and preserving that and the evergreens. I think, you know, again, I was on the commission when we approved the Stonegate and I think, I don't want to speak for who was on the commission then. I thought that that was part of the Stonegate development, so.
I believe that was probably the intention, honestly, from the way it looks out there. It ended up on the adjacent property.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Lewis, any questions of the applicant?
No, I think I already passed, but I
Oh, sorry?
That's a, no, I'm sorry, but I concur with Commissioner McBride. I think we talked about the berm or the raised mound at length when we talked about Stonegate, so I think it's very important to maintain that.
Thank you. Mr. Ehlaff, any questions of the applicant?
Just a quick one for Mr. Farugia. You mentioned Paul had a remark in the staff report about dressing up the backs of the buildings, even though the mound is made, there's limited visible, and you said, sure, we'd do a brick wrap or something like that. And maybe this is more for Paul, so Paul pipe in if that's the case. If that's something, Mr. Farugia said, yeah, they'd be happy to do that, but we don't have that as a condition on our approvals here. Is that something you would look for in the final development plan, or should that be a condition of this approval?
I think it could wait till the final development plan.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ehlaff. Mr. Hanson, any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple for the five-foot sidewalk. You know, it's on the south side of the private drive, but all the residences are really on the north side. So all the residents to access that would have to cross the private drive. Is there a reason for that? Why wouldn't it be on the resident's side?
I'm sorry, you're asking about the sidewalk playing along from the residences?
The south side of the private drive instead of the north side?
Yeah. I believe it. I mean, I think the intention there was that they have more of a yard, rather than their yard being a front yard being a five-foot wide sidewalk on it. You know, walking across a private drive that has access to 13 homes. I think that was thought. Crossing the, you put a five, you're already be close on that street on the private drive, five feet of sidewalk, you know, eliminates five feet of front yard.
Right, or you could shift the private drive five feet south. So I mean, you know. I guess based on this occupancy of the duplexes and the single families, the need for 17 visitor spots, you know, being one plus per unit with access for any visitors to also park on their driveway, do you see a need for actually that many?
I mean, I think, you know, you've got two-car garages. We could probably get away with less. I mean, I don't know. I understand the ones up towards the entrance potentially being a if we could pick it up. I like having additional parking that way. Residents can have parking spaces, but if you're one per unit or one extra, one off-street parking per unit.
I mean, this commissioner looks at the five at the entrance thinking if somebody's pulling in and somebody's backing out there, it could be a safety hazard right there. A lot of confluence and also knowing the turns off of Nagel are going to be a little bit probably at a higher speed than into a driveway just because it's Nagel. So this commissioner wouldn't mind seeing those five go away completely. You know, same sort of comments on the mound and the trees to the north that our previous commissioners talked about. And then the site plan states a 40-foot front yard, but actually the dimension on the site plan has a 20-foot. I'm assuming the 20-foot front yard is really where you're looking to towards the private drive?
I'm sorry, you're, can you say that again?
Yeah, so on the site plan, it talks about a 40-foot front yard, which is from the public way. From the private drive, it is a true 20-foot setback. So you're looking at the 20-foot that's on the site plan?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have of the applicant. Thank you very much. So with that, if anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor, yourself, state your name and address and any affiliation you have to this case.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me? This is Craig Abercrombie with Abercrombie Associates. We're the civil engineer working with Zica on this project. I just wanted to clear up just a few things on the berm and the mound on the Stonegate property. We haven't done our survey mapping yet, so the topography is based on GIS data. And then we we overlay the aerial photo for those trees. So we're not 100% sure exactly where the tree and mound are, but that's the best data we have right now before we do our final mapping, which will be done before the final development plan comes.
Mr. Abercrombie, with your actual survey, will you also be surveying the width of those trees so you can look at the impact to the root structure, not just the height? Okay.
Yes, we'll inventory the trees and then our landscape designer will feed that to them for their final landscape design. So I just wanted to be clear on, that's not survey data yet, so the trees might be farther north. We're just not sure 100%.
Okay, thank you.
And then the only other thing I wanted to add is we have no problem shifting that sanitary line north to stay as far as we can from that southern front oak tree.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clear those two items up. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Mr. Chair, could I ask Mr. Abercrombie a question while he's up?
Yes, please, Ms. McBride.
I just want to make sure that I understand. So Craig, the buildings are shown 30 feet off the property line, but the property line has been established. What hasn't been established is the location of the mound and the trees, right?
Correct. That's the deed. We plotted the deed up with the bound, that's the boundary, basically. It might be a little different once we do our boundary resolution, but it's it's not going to change much visually. And then we'll locate the trees, we'll map the topography, and that'll be relative to the property lines you're seeing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the boundary we were looking at and the setbacks we're looking at, those are accurate within a few inches.
Correct, yes.
That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing and hearing no one, we will
Excuse me.
Okay.
Hey, I'm sorry about that. I was just trying to get off mute. This is James McClellan. I live at 8053 Pine Terrace Drive. I actually live directly across Nagel Road from the property in this proposal. Just wanted to say, over the years, at least a couple other development proposals have been put in front of this committee, including larger apartment structures, rental units, proposals, which would include a much higher density than the current neighborhood has. And those proposals were met negatively by the homeowners, such as myself, as we feared they would negatively impact our quality of life and property values. And each time, this committee listened to that and respected our voice. I think this proposal differs, however. Although it does require a zoning change, it differs in that these would be private homes owned by individuals. The proposed structure with homes would only be, I think, one or we'll call it one and a half story in height with a much lower population density as compared to the previous proposals that were put forth for the site. I would say I'm very pleased with this proposal for the Nagel Road site, feel it will fit our neighborhood as well as it provides a type of housing that residents in Anderson Township who are aging might look to downsize and not have to leave our community. So just knowing that this property on Nagel is going to be eventually developed, I welcome this proposal and would be in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Okay, again, hearing no one and seeing no one. If anyone would like to speak opposed, please unmute yourself, state your name and address and any affiliation to the case.
Hi, I'm Chris Kepner. I'm at 8132 Pine Terrace. In general, I'd like to, I agree with Jim about this being the right kind of project in the right kind of area in a way that kind of preserves the neighborhood style. And my only concern in going forward was just to do our due diligence to ensure that those trees, particularly those oak trees are preserved. To that end, I, if you're aware, I did do a petition online, just trying to try my hand at this a little bit, and I've got over 100 signatures that, you know, support. What I put in the petition was the idea of having someone a little more independent of the process to really evaluate the impact on the proposal to those trees, someone who doesn't have a vested interest. I think the developer in this case says he has no intention of hurting the trees or taking them down, but I don't think that would stop him if that needed to be. I just think I would like someone a little more independent to make that determination. And I'm not familiar with the Anderson Tree Committee, but it sounds like they're on board, but I just don't know what that would, if we had a qualified arborist or environmental consulting agency that could really look at this and study it and give us an independent opinion and really let that be a hint for this project going forward. And if I could do one question, if someone could, did someone say there is a, like a city right of way on Nagel that hasn't been exercised? That would interfere with the trees?
Mr. Jury, I think you could speak to the right of way as part of the requirement.
So as part of, with any zone change requests, Hamilton County requires dedication of right of way that is consistent with the Hamilton County Thoroughfare Plan. So the Thoroughfare Plan does require dedication of 40 feet of right of way. So what that means is an additional 40 feet back would be dedicated by the developer to county right of way. And again, we don't, according to Mr. Abercrombie, the trees are based off of aerial photos, so we don't know the exact locations of the trees, but it appears that one sits a little bit closer to the roadway than the other. And additional 40 feet of right of way may put one completely in the right of way and the other, you know, just outside are really close.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Any other question or comments, Mr. Kepner?
You know, I don't know if there was a proposal that is already being considered for how to really study. Study, I heard it was doing the ANSCI system to make that determination. I don't know if that is done by the developer or or who would do that, if it would be someone who is more independent would be doing that study or not.
So I think the commission is going to be talking about that when we, you know, stop the public comment and we can talk about that amongst the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak opposed?
This is Pamela Van Sant. I live at 80 82 Stonegate, so I am the second house from Nagel. So if you can see on your map, I will have two patios, basically very close to my backyard, which has an enormous patio on it. I've invested quite heavily in building a very nice backyard that I've enjoyed privacy. So I have a question. I'm really not professional who can interpret this drawing, so if Mr. Baragia could explain exactly how many feet are between those patios and the mound? Because my back patio is fairly close to what I'm hearing. We don't even know if that will be preserved.
Thank you. We're going to take all the questions and then let the applicant respond to any comments he's heard from the public.
Okay.
So any other questions or comments?
My other comments would be, so I'm just going to conclude that that looks very, very close. So again, I just want to reiterate what others have said. I think it's vital that that mound and the existing evergreen trees are maintained. In fact, with the houses so close to that mound, I would request that there be consideration of another row of trees because it's not complete screening. And then if you'll notice on the end toward Nagel, there's not a lot of trees. And in fact, there is a large tree. I don't know if it's an oak. It's a lot of kind of roughed up wildly growing shrubs around one tree, but that creates quite a bit of screening for the first three houses from the noise on Nagel and as well creates shade and a nice buffer. I am interpreting this that that will all come down and there are no evergreens there to shade or to screen the first house next to Nagel. So I would request that there be more landscaping added on that end of the flow of very nice private housing. My other concern again is the height. I'm not into privacy issues. I understand that two of these properties will have a lot. Yet I don't know where those are going to be and if that's going to be overlooking private backyards from the single-family homes on Stonegate. I would like to hear an answer to that question later. And again, my general concern, but I know it was brought up and I just want to reiterate, I agree, the aesthetics of the back of those houses is terrible. It looks like very inexpensive housing in a neighborhood that's not really considered valuable. And the comment made that duplexes are a good compromise between the multifamily housing to the west of us and the single-family housing where I live. I'm not sure I agree with that because if you recall, most of the single-family homeowners on Stonegate did not necessarily embrace the multifamily housing that now is considered normal. We're creating a compromise between the two. So I would prefer, and I did go voice my opinion with the open house, that these be more single-family homes and less duplexes. I think that would leave a lot more space potentially between Stonegate and these new houses.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Van Sant. Anyone else like to speak opposed?
Yes, my name is Maura Elpers and I live on Pine Terrace. I'm at 8085 Pine Terrace Drive. As been stated before, I would like to compliment that what we are seeing right now is an upgrade to a commitment to not changing the character of the area in which we live. And it really does matter. Mr., you know, Farugia, I understand the financial issues here, but issues here, but all of us who live in this proximity have a vested interest that goes far beyond more than financials with this. And although I heard it stated that there was no intention to take the trees down, that's just beyond, after sitting for three hours listening to stuff about air conditioners and a few feet, you know, parking spaces and a bicycle workshop, I think that when you take a look at a trees that might be, you know, close to 150 years old, and the way that the green space has been eaten up in Anderson Township, it is vitally important to our community to be paying attention to that. And it will make a difference. I ask this, these commissioners to take a look at that and put it in writing. Because if you don't have the intention to preserve and protect, then it's not going to happen. It can't be good enough to just have no intention to take them down. And one of the reasons that the sidewalk does not continue is because if it did, it would interfere with the Gateway Oaks. And it wouldn't be possible. It's, we've been here since 2009, and I only have a nine-year-old child, who that's our bus stop up there every, every day. And it will change everything if, if you change the way that it looks. One comment had been that that area was heavily wooded. And even with the development that just has already gone in, but we haven't even had the traffic issues that will come from the development that has already been put there, it's not heavily wooded anymore. And the trees, evergreen trees, again, a compliment to the commission that, that had those on that mound and paid attention to what that would mean. They're, they're beautiful and they have been maturing. But if that, if they get interrupted and taken down, it's only going to further disrupt what the feeling of this neighborhood has been. And it is just not reasonable to, for just financial gain on the part of the township or developer, to truly change the entire feel of where we chose to be homeowners. And so although I definitely applaud the look of what we're looking at now versus some of the other things that had been brought, it's just not consignable to not protect those oak. Sure, that the decision that you do protect that mound and those trees. And I would ask you, Mr. Farugia, to come, I would welcome you to come here and walk the area again, and on a frequent basis, as you are making some of the decisions that you're making, because it truly affects not just our street, but also the Stonegate area. The question I do have is, when some of the other developments were being brought up, there was a possibility to have another route out that could go through some of the commercial development. And I can't tell from this if that's a possibility, because that, that's going to change things too. Even with duplexes, when you look at the amount of cars that this may be, when we have the other development that has just been put in, it's already an extremely busy street with Nagel, as was brought up before. If you try to get out in the morning, when you have high school kids trying to turn out of our street, or when you have, you know, kids trying to walk to Nagel, and in the evening at rush hour, it's, it's challenging to get out. And if there would be a different way that some of these new homes and duplexes were able to exit into and maybe have the opportunity to go out through where Ollie's is in that development, that could be over to Cane's, that would at least reduce some of the traffic flow onto Nagel. And that probably wouldn't be that difficult to do. I'm, I'm definitely not versed with that, but I would like to ask that question, that that be at least looked at as an alternative to, you know, only being able to get in and get out onto Nagel. So thank you for your attention. This is, we plan to be here for a very long time, and what is done there will make a huge difference in how it feels to live here. And I think the five parking spaces would be a good start to be removed right there. That will change a lot of what it looks like even to go into that development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak opposed? I see and and hearing no one.
Hi, this is Adam Marison, representing Stonegate Apartments.
Can you state your address, Mr. Marison?
7911 Stonegate, 7935 and 7945 Stonegate Drive. I have a couple items just to discuss, and it'll help, I think, provide some clarity on some previous comments made. The mound that's in question behind the Stonegate Homes, there's actually a historical agreement between us and Anderson Township for the maintenance and management and the original install of the mound and the trees. So if I'm remembering correctly, I can pull up some documentation and share it with you, Paul, that, that mound is partially on our property and partially on yours. And that's why there was a mutual agreement done. And so if that is accurate, then that mound should not be disturbed whatsoever. Then for Nagel Road right-of-way, when the county approved and required the turn lanes to be done, that right-of-way where the two oak trees are, was expanded. And so those trees are within the Hamilton County right-of-way. We have plans approved by Hamilton County that demonstrate that. The parking spaces, we're not necessarily opposed to reducing or removing them, but one thing to consider, if there's not guest parking, I would have concern that people will try to park over at Pine Terrace, or even potentially over on Stonegate Drive. And then the comment about the stormwater management in terms of it being tied into or running off into our property, we already had to kind of over-design and build the stormwater management for the new development that we just completed because of all the water runoff coming off of the church property. So we're not really in favor of having more water, given the impervious surface that is being built here to be directed over towards our property. So if we're legally not obligated to comply with that, I don't think we'll be in favor with complying. Other than that, that's the comments that I had.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak opposed? Okay, hearing and seeing no one once again. Mr. Farugia, if you would like to briefly respond to any of the statements and questions that have been asked?
Yes. First of all, the, the two trees that everybody's concerned with, you know, I apologize if I offended anybody by using the word intention. It's not, removing those trees is not part of our plan. Have no, we don't, there's no reason for us to remove them if they're not in the way. And plan does not show them in the way. So we wouldn't, for no reason, remove them. In one of the comments I received prior to the meeting, I guess from one of the members, something about guaranteeing the life of them. We're not guaranteeing, you know, we're not going to take them down, but I also can't tell you that, you know, if they're in the right-of-way, they're in the right-of-way, and I have no control of them. I can tell you that we do not want to take those trees down. We will not take the trees down. Secondly, Ms. Van Sant, on the location of your patio, didn't scale this off today, but I know the back of your house is about 40, probably about 40 feet from the property line. You call it, add another 20 to the back of patio, to the back of our patio, you're 60 feet. I don't know how big your patio is. I haven't been over your house. From the back of your house are about 60, our patio is about 60 feet from the back of your house, to kind of give you an idea. And then as far as the stormwater is concerned, I'll actually refer to Craig Abercrombie, your engineer on the project, have a touch on that if you can.
So the, the stormwater flows kind of from the northeast corner toward the southwest corner, kind of a 45-degree angle. So we have a retention basin in that corner. It's the low, low part of the lot, which is the best place for stormwater detention. That'll have to be reviewed and approved by Hamilton County Plan and Development Stormwater Department. We're not going to be asking for any variances in terms of stormwater design or anything. So we'll meet the, the criteria as set forth by the county.
All right. Thank you both. With that, we'll stop the public comment section and discuss amongst the commission. So Mr. Henson, any comments amongst the commission members?
No, I mean, not, not necessarily. Everything's been well talked over. I think it may make some sense just to reiterate the fact that, that this meeting itself is in the minutes that will result from it are both official public records. And the developer has stated multiple times that he will not be taking those trees down. There was a comment from one of the commissioners earlier that jumped out though regarding actually tapping in to the sewer that may affect the root systems there. So there probably is an unresolved issue to, to think about there when we get to engineering and final drawings, and what impact that may have on the trees. But it seems pretty obvious that the developer wants to retain those trees and is going to retain those trees. I also think on the plan, you know, I've been looking at street maps and I'm pretty familiar with the area myself, that, that the trees that are illustrated on this plan on the berm, I'm sorry, on the buffer, actually extend a lot further to the east than what are shown here as well. One of my recommendations was going to be to extend that landscaping to provide additional buffering, but it looks like in the real world that that buffering already exists. I am particularly concerned about the tree line to the, to the south, abutting both of the residences and even the church for that matter, as well as the, the amount of tree coverage that we're losing along the western portion of the lot. I'm guessing just so that these houses have a little bit of yard that you're probably going to clear all the way to the edge of the property line. So maybe if you could potentially push back on that, if that's not accurate, feel free, but it, it seems that that's probably going to be the case there. I, I do, I understand the, you know, the neighbors' concerns about the parking in the northeast, both sides of it. You know, you'd love to see it go because you don't want to have the kind of safety concerns with that intersection, which I think are very legitimate. And then you also want to be concerned about overflow parking with people trying to park on Pine Terrace or other places and walk across the street. So maybe there's a happy medium there, but I fully support reducing those numbers or potentially even eliminating them, especially on the curve with the visibility, simply the location of them away from the sidewalk and everything else. But other than that, I think, I think those are my comments for, at this point. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Goddard. So I did want to let the residents know that Paul has proposed a condition in here that the big trees need to be preserved. So that's, that's going to be covered. Mr. Farugia says he doesn't want to take them down. What's troubling to me is that they're in right-of-way, so there's really only so much that can be done, but certainly during construction, they can be and should be protected. Secondly, I'm like learning all this stuff here tonight. So Ms. Elpers enlightened us that the reason that sidewalk is kind of funny and stops and it crosses the street is because it's supposed to, it was to protect some of those trees. So that's interesting because I think with this project saying, well, the sidewalk needs to be continued, which makes a ton of sense from, you know, maybe we have a conflict between our pathway program and our tree preservation program, and I'm not sure I know of the solution. The other I learned tonight, which is kind of a bummer, was that that, that mound, which I think is fantastic, that's grown up really nicely, is, at first I thought, well, it was pushed over on the township property inadvertently perhaps, but then Mr. Marison says that, that was part of the, part of the plan all along. So I'm kind of scratching my head on what's going on here. But I think the sum of it is, is what, what, what I would, I think would be helpful to is actually a really good landscaping plan that showed, Craig said, you know, we don't know exactly where those trees are. Maybe we'll get lucky and it's just a GIS adjustment and those, those trees are, are back further, but we don't know that yet. And we don't know the details of the protection of how these big trees are going to be protected. And some are things like, for example, the parking that's up front, which, which I actually think it's, the parking up front is, is necessary for this. We have someplace for the visitors to park, but maybe, maybe some landscaping around that would be helpful. So I guess for me, I really like the project, but there's a few details I guess I'd like to see and maybe help the developer work out. And then this project can hopefully move forward. I did appreciate hearing the resident right across the street say that he was just thrilled with this project. That's kind of like what, what we like to hear, and what I like to hear. I think it, it actually is a decent fit as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Ms. McBride?
Thank you. Yeah, I would echo Mr. Ellis' sentiments on the, on the use of the property. I mean, when we approved the single-family homes on Stonegate, there was concern. When we approved the Marison Development to the west, there's been concern. So I, I think that, given the existing pieces that we have, that this is really a good fit. And I also think it goes toward the expansion of the type of housing inventory that the, that the township has available to current and future residents. So, so I would be supporting the project. A couple of things, though, I, as you all gathered, was very stunned to learn that that mound and those trees are on the township property, not on the Stonegate property, which is where I thought we put them when we approved the single-family homes on Stonegate. So that was a surprise. I guess I would like to make sure that that mound and those trees are protected because I think that's a really intricate part of both of these developments and also, you know, from, from Nagel Road as well. I echo the sentiments from some of my fellow commissioners about adding building material on the rear elevations, and I would also extend that to the side elevation for the first unit there from Nagel because you're going to get a good shot of that unit looking in. And with regards to those five parking spaces, I'm, I agree with Mr. Ellis. I think that there is a need for overflow for, you know, well, not this Christmas, but other Christmases or other holiday events to have some parking. But I also agree with the, the chair's concern that somebody backing out of there and somebody coming in off of Nagel, that might not be maybe the best place to, to locate them. So maybe there's the possibility to put additional spaces on the, the ones that are located on the south side of the drive, maybe the, the extension of the private drive there, how do I phrase this, the southeast corner of the site. Maybe there's, you could put, drop two spaces in there that would be convenient or something. But I think that's, that's certainly worth, worth looking at. And with regards to the, to the tree preservation, I've got some ideas on there. I know staff put some suggestions in there, and I would probably echo those as, as well. So I think those are all the, the comments that I had.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, a question, I guess, for Paul. Uh, hearing about how the township had some dual responsibility for the mound. Was any of that included in the sale to uh, the Zicca development that uh, that the mound would have to be maintained as it was uh, originally established?
So, Mr. Marison did refresh my memory a little bit on the mound, and I think the purpose was twofold, to screen the homes from Stonegate, but also you know, for the longest time, the township had proposed to use this property as a um, a rear access to our our campus on Beechmont. It was it was meant to be um, rear access to a possible, you know, maintenance building, salt dome, recycling facility, all of that never moved forward, but I think it was a dual purpose, you know, to to screen whatever future development may occur here. I I don't know the ins and outs of the agreement that Mr. Marison provided. And I don't know the terms of the sale to Zicca, and it's, the sale has not been finalized. It's under contract.
So it could fall back to the zone, so it could fall back to zoning is making it some sort of, you know, I I want to have, that we maintain that then?
Correct. It could be a zoning condition because that was contingent upon zoning approval.
And and while I got you, Paul, there was another uh, question that was brought up by one of the residents about uh, additional access out the rear end of the development. I know the uh, the uh, development we did approve and has been built has access back through Ollies Park and all that. Is it feasible? Was there a right of way or anything they could do out of this development?
To to make only sole access through the Stonegate property? Is that?
So you'd have a uh, uh, through Nagel, but have another exit back into the commercial property?
I, you would have to go through the Stonegate property in order to get over to the commercial property. And if it's, if you have access off of Nagel and access through Stonegate, I think you're creating a a different problem. Right.
Okay.
There is no existing easement, to answer your question, no.
Okay, that's that's all I had.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I guess my comment to the commissioner is it seems like a good transition from the more commercial towards the south to the single family to the north and east in scale of the building. Um, and also actually occupancy of each of the buildings. You know, I would go one step further than Ms. McBride and say the stone feature or wrap wainscot should be on all four sides of all buildings. You know, and not just on the one that faces Nagel, that all the buildings have that wainscot at the base on all elevations uh, beyond the front elevation. Seeing the floor plans for the duplexes are very useful because the loft is positioned that is only facing the front of the building. So any concerns to the neighbors to the north of access or view out of the north side based on the plans of the individual units provided, you know, that's not a concern. Um, but you know, it does seem to be a good transition from the higher impact uses to the less impact uses of the single family. So with those comments, uh, I'd like to open it up to the commission to make a a motion.
Um, I would prepare to make a motion if the commission is acceptable to my doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would make a motion that we recommend approval of case three dash twenty twenty Anderson for thirteen fifty-seven Nagel Road. Based on the recommendation of staff, the compliance with our adopted township plans incorporating the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee and the Tree Committee. And with the uh, conditions that are contained in the staff report, one uh, one through five, and then the additional one through three. And I would supplement those conditions or alter those conditions with the following conditions, conditions on conditions. Um, one, that the uh, mound that exists on the northern part of the property, uh, which is uh, has a uh, evergreen um, line on top of it, uh, be preserved and incorporated into the uh, proposed development, and then it be protected by uh, fencing during construction at the toe of that berm. Um, two, that a brick or stone um, uh, feature be added to the rear and the sides of all of the units. Um, and that we see those on the final development plan with the final building elevations. Um, three, that the two oak trees on Nagel um, be either in compliance with the ANSI A three hundred standards for preservation, or that a hard fence be constructed ten feet off the drip line of that tree, which is whichever is a more stringent um, requirement for protecting those trees. Um, four, that the uh, five parking spaces on the east side of the site be reviewed and consider um, relocating some of those spaces to alleviate potential conflict with vehicles entering the development. And that landscaping be provided around any spaces that are to remain in that location.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Anyone like to second or comment on the motion?
Anne, I've got a quick comment just with regard to uh, the potentially more stringent hard fencing around uh, ten feet outside the drip line on those trees. Are you talking only within development, development? I'm looking, it looks like the drip line goes all the way out into the middle of Nagel. So it wouldn't necessarily be possible all the way around, but I'm I'm assuming we're talking like interior. Is that during construction or permanent?
That would be just during just uh, construction. Uh, Mr. Henson, my my experience is that people tend to have lunch under there. They park the the little bulldozers under there. They, you know, so we just want to make sure that that drip line of those trees is fully protected because I think that I don't think it's the applicant's intent to take them down, but I think that if, once they're, the drip line is is damaged, I think that they are are going to be in jeopardy.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. Thank you.
I I had one question to uh, McBride. On your motion on preserving the mound and the trees because Mr. Furushia said that he thought they they might have to get into it. Would it be acceptable that uh, that they have to be preserved um, substantially as they are? However, if construction does disturb that because it has to for drainage or some, they be reconstructed substantially to the same condition?
I guess my concern would be I'd like to see those trees preserved, though. I mean, those are really nice looking trees that are out there right now. And if you go into the mound, then what happens with the with the plant material?
Right, well, it'd have to be replaced, obviously, I think.
So anyone like to second Ms. McBride's motion?
Am I allowed to make a comment at this time, or is that?
No, sir. I mean, your final development plan can address this.
Gotcha.
I would uh, second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Donovan, can you please call roll? You're muted.
I could not figure out how to unmute myself right there. I know, I'm still here. Um, Ms. McBride, I wanted to note that I did edit um, the comments in the minutes to match Mr. Henson's addition of um, the hard fencing be installed ten feet off the drip line during construction.
That's that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
I would, I would still second that.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Elif?
Yeah.
Mr. Goddard?
Yes. Well, thank you all. Uh, Mr. Jury and Ms. Donovan, any potential signs to one maybe that we know of tonight for next month?
Uh, potentially, we may have. Um, and just real quick, you should all have received your thank you letters for being the zoning commissioners. Hopefully you've received them Saturday or today, if not tomorrow.
Or they're coming.
My my email and phone were incorrect again.
Oh, no.
I got the, I got the letter, the mail. My mailing address is correct.
It's wrong on the.
Based on, based on tonight's meeting, I think that we all made probably below minimum wage tonight, just saying.
Will dinner be provided at future meetings?
Not virtual.
Not virtually.
Or somebody, can you get it delivered through Uber Eats?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your, your patience as this meeting went along.
It did. Another comment, uh, so Sarah, this is our new second alternate, and I believe she's been on the entire meeting. Ms. Joe, meetings generally aren't this long, but we appreciate attending the whole meeting.
He's rethinking that.
Good to know I was getting a little nervous, sorry.
But no, uh, thank you all very much. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anyone opposed? I'm gonna hang up on you.
Okay, I'll. Everybody.
Have a good holiday.
Well, can you stop the recording?